Too much sugar, all the mince.
Counselors, good evening, and general public, good evening. Before we start tonight's meeting, I'd like to remember two members of our community who've recently passed away. First, and this was fairly recent, Jay McCarthy. His real name is John, I don't think I knew that. Jay McCarthy, beloved husband, father, grandfather, brother, uncle, dear friend. He died on Saturday, January 18th. Jay was born in 1946 in Lowell. After graduating from Lowell High School in 1964, he enlisted in the United States Air Force where he was a sergeant in the Jet 306th Tactical Fighter Squad, serving as a crew chief on an airbase in Vietnam in 1968 and 69. Jay was proud to have served his country and credits the military for many lifelong commitments to do the right thing. He has been a regular participant in marching and Memorial Day and Veterans Day, parades each year in Newburyport. His favorite part was to present a young child along the sidelines with a small American flag. Most of his work during his career after graduating from University of Lowell was in the technology field. When he retired, he pursued amongst other things his great passion of photography. His most favorite job came in his retirement as a senior associate at the Newburyport Art Association on Water Street, where he loved working with staff and artists. He also enjoyed working with staff and members of the Newburyport Senior Center, where he volunteered each Tuesday and as a volunteer for Special Olympics. I know that many of you knew Jay, and our condolences go to his wife Nancy, and children, stepchildren, grandchildren, and stepchildren, and other family members and friends. Also, Jane Politis, a resident of Georgetown, passed away peacefully on January 14th. She was born in Evanston, Illinois, moved from Illinois to Arizona, settled in Fresno, California, where she completed middle school and high school, graduating as a salutatorian. She attended Stanford and majored in political science, and also studied and spoke Italian and Russian. Jane dedicated 25 years of her life to Newburyport High School, where she taught psychology, sociology, history, civics, and the leadership seminar. She was nominated as a finalist for Teacher of the Year in Massachusetts. She was also presented with the Edward J. Mullen Award for Teaching Excellence within the Newburyport school system. Our condolences go to her family, and we will hold them deep in our thoughts, as she was a valued member of our Newburyport teaching community. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If the clerk would be so kind as to call the roll.
Mr. President, it would be my honor. This is the roll call for the City Council Meeting of January 27th at 7:00 PM. Counselor McCauley?
Here.
Counselor Preston?
Here.
Counselor Shan?
Present.
Counselor Wright is absent. Counselor Zied?
Here.
Counselor Dunleavy?
Here.
Counselor Granis?
Here.
Counselor Harmon?
Here.
Counselor Khan?
Present.
Counselor Lane?
Here.
And Counselor President Cameron?
Here.
We have a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. Lead us to late files.
There are three late files. There's Communication 607, which is a grant, description ADA, self-evaluation, transition planning to accompany transfer 209 to go to Budget and Finance. There are two memos. There's a memo regarding the appointment of the parking clerk by the city solicitor, and that's 608. 609 is a memo regarding the office of city clerk and parking clerk by the city clerk.
Motion to waive the rules and accept the late files.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All those opposed say no. I heard none of that.
Public comment?
Public comment.
You gonna speak?
Yeah.
Hold on.
Miss.
Yeah, you gotta sign up.
Sorry.
Jump the gun.
Good evening. Please hold on. Thank you. Okay, yes, John Powers, state your name, your address, and speak to a matter on our agenda, up to two minutes. Thank you.
Good evening.
I think that's somebody else.
Is that your name?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
We go in there.
I apologize.
John Powers? Is anybody out there? Okay. Well, we will move on to you.
Jim?
I sometimes don't know my name either. Your handwriting is bad. But Jim, I can tell. And Jim, do you want to state your name, address, and up to two minutes on a matter that's on our agenda?
My name's Jim Marks. I reside in Worcester, Mass. I'm the business agent for TIBS Local 170. I represent the admins, the department heads, and the parking control officers. In front of you this evening, obviously, the department head's contract is in front of you for approval. I'm asking you, obviously, to support the contract. It's been a long, drawn-out process, a year in negotiations with the city, market adjustments going back and forth that the city requested from their towns. We put those market adjustments in, found that a good amount of the department heads were underpaid and needed adjustment. Some were right in line. We spent that good part of the year trying to negotiate a salary that would work for the department heads and, obviously, the city. So we're asking for you to endorse it. You know, and I understand that money's a big part of this process here, but there's one part of the process that always seems to be missed, and that's institutional knowledge. So there's a lot of job vacancies out there, and there's a lot of department heads that can name their price right now with other cities and towns, just so they could get some of that institutional knowledge. You are blessed to have some amazing department heads that run the city and help with everyday operations, and that institutional knowledge is very important. So as you review the contract today, I just ask that you keep that institutional knowledge in the back of your head. Know that we negotiated, you know, with the city for a good period of time, and we feel that the contract that's presented in front of you is a fair and equitable contract for all parties involved. So I appreciate your support tonight, and thank you for the time, and sorry for the confusion.
Thank you, appreciate that. So there's a raised hand online. We are finished with public comment in person. City of Newburyport DPS, so I will allow you to talk, please state your name, because we don't really know who you are. We could make a few guesses, though, and up to two minutes on a matter related to the agenda, and then I will mute you.
Hi, can you unmute?
Yes. Yes, we can.
Hi, this is John Eric White. I'm a resident and also a city engineer. I started work in 2011 as a utility engineer, 2009 as a utility engineer. Couple years later, I got upgraded to city engineer. My comments are relative to the department head union contract that Jim was just talking about. I realize that there's not much the city council can do about my comments tonight except for vote yager name for this contract, and I'll live with that. But I want to go on record, the contract negotiations were absolutely an unprofessional disaster. Jim is absolutely not being upfront to you guys. He's gaslighting you. He cannot support us whatsoever. Absolute incompetence, and it's actually disheartening. The first year, the proposal is 0% cost of living. So they claim that within that 0%, the first year is a market adjustment. If you assume a 3% cost of living for the first year, that leaves a 1.9% raise for me. I've been working here 15 years. I asked for a $7,000 raise twice, got $1,000. I asked for another one, got zero. I know you can't fix it. It's totally, this inequity is absolutely, I'm ashamed of the city. I saved the city over $250,000 last year. I convinced my boss to terminate $120,000 design contract because he wanted to be the manager, and I couldn't design it, I could design it in four days. He terminated it. I designed it in four days. That is free money. Money to use to give me my little bit of a raise, and that could have carried me over four years. I saved hundreds of thousands in design and other things for the city, and I got nothing for it. Teachers, I never wanted to be on the union. Mark Tabitha came down and said, "Oh, you're in the union now." Well, I never wanted to be. So I think this whole thing is a shame, it's a sham.
Okay.
And I know that the city council picked a dent about it, but I want to get on the record. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John Eric. And I will mute you now. I will take Judy, whoever you are, I'm gonna unmute you, state your name and your Newburyport address, and up to two minutes on a matter on the agenda, and that is the last hand we're gonna take, because that's the last one I see. Judy?
Judy, time at 39 Line Street. And I just want to comment that, in case you don't know it, John Eric White is one of the best city employees that we have and have ever had in the city of Newburyport. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And that would be it for public comment. That would lead us to the mayor's comment. And the mayor. Mayor, I'm gonna promote you to a panelist, because I think that's easier.
Can anyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I apologize about being here in person tonight. I got hit with the flu this weekend. Hit the office, hit the schools. A lot of sickness out there, so I just encourage everyone to please take care of yourself during these winter months. I thought I'd stay out of the office one more day, and hopefully I'm ready to come back to work tomorrow. Just real quick, all the two people you mentioned tonight, Jay McCarthy, wow, you couldn't find a nicer guy than Jay McCarthy. I got to know him and Nancy White, Nancy, really well as a youngster, bartending at the Park Lunch way back when in the 90s. And he actually also used to work out at the fitness factory when I worked there in high school. But just a super guy. Again, he didn't miss a parade. Very proud veteran for the Air Force. You know, again, Veterans Day, Memorial Day, always there. I think if you went into the senior center any day during the week, you could find him there, read in the paper there when you walk in the front door. Just a super guy, and just my heart goes up to Nancy and their family. Just a really big loss for the community. Mrs. Politis, I didn't have her in my mayor's update tonight, but she was my favorite teacher at Newburyport High School. She is absolutely a big reason why I'm here today in this role as mayor of Newburyport. You know, the folks at Politis, her husband Stephen was a coach and teacher at Newburyport High School, while they just, they impacted generations of Newburyporters coming up through school. They lived in Georgetown. Their kids, Kathy and Yanni, were both in high school with me. Kathy was a good friend, but she was just, she was just my type of teacher. History, civics, thought-provoking, leadership, challenged me. I did terrible in her class. I was just terrible in her class. She was awesome. And again, I think when I went to Ohio State, one of the first papers I ever wrote was about her, because she just had that kind of impact on me. And like I said, I don't think I'd be here today without her. So I was glad to be here today. Again, two wonderful people who had a great impact on our community. Another person that I didn't mention in my report that I wanted to mention real quick is Tom Henry of the Water Department, is retiring this week from the Water Department. 43 years he's worked for the city of Newburyport. I told him the other day, I was seven years old, or six years old when he started working for the city. He thought that was funny. But just a super guy. He had a lot of great things to say about the job and the department. The other day when we celebrated him down at the Water Department on Friday, I mean, on Thursday. But just, again, super guy, great career. And again, he's leading a big boy, but again, he's leaving a lot of great guys, I think a lot about, think a lot about him, as well as the Water Department. Just again, I've already talked over my time, but just real quick tonight, I do hope you vote for the department head contract tonight. Again, that was a long process, and the department union voted in favor of it. So I know you heard from, you know, an employee who wasn't in favor of it tonight, but it was voted, and it was first voted down. So again, more work was done, and then we came back and we got to a contract that was ratified by its members. So that's where we're at with that tonight. You know, Brown School, we passed a big hurdle this week. The Purple Housing Trust approved that $150,000 for that project, which is great. I should move that along and help you as you talk about the disposition order next week. Rec Center at 59 Little Street, we had really a huge amount, several contractors come to the walkthrough of the site the other day, so that was good news. Again, those bids are due February 14th. I had a great meeting today around Whittier at Northern Essex. I did get over one meeting today. Took a lot out of me. We did have one great meeting. This was the first working group meeting with Northern Essex and Whittier, so it was representatives from all 11, cities and towns, and Rowley was the only one that did not show up today. But, you know, after the MSBA voted in December to get the Whittier project back into the pipeline of the MSBA, one of the conditions on that is that by July 1st, we have a new ratified regional agreement, which, again, was a big sticking point, because we had April, who was refusing to participate or to edit and change the regional agreement from where it's currently constituted from 1968. So now we have a directive from the MSBA to fix that regional agreement. So that is certainly good news. And we also talked about moving forward in these meetings, we'll be talking about what that model, what that shared campus model will look like and what we're looking for between Northern Essex and Whittier. So good first meeting today, more information to come. What else do they have? Sorry, I'm going on forever. You know, you have more issues for me tonight around the parking clerk. You know, again, I still think this creates more questions than answers. So I just, I hope you have a great discussion about it tonight. We are certainly open to amendments to make this more, something that is more of a solution moving forward. But it certainly shouldn't be rushed at all, and it shouldn't be rushed because we're going through a, you know, hiring process right now. It's really, it's not for you to fix some things, and I hope we can do that. So I'll leave it at that. Again, city of the city is February 26th, get those nominations in, and I'm sure I'm forgetting stuff, but I hope you guys had a great meeting.
Thank you, mayor. Any questions or comments from counselors to the mayor? Okay, hearing none, thank you, mayor, and we will move.
Thank you, a great meeting.
All right, thank you.
Consent.
Thank you, consent, I'm gonna.
You ready?
Go for it.
Okay, the consent agenda this evening consists of the approval of minutes for January 13th meeting. There are two communications, 605, which is 2025 committee assignments to be received and filed. Communication 606 is the mid-year budget report, that's to go to Budget and Finance. There are five transfers, all going to Budget and Finance. Transfer 209, Commission on Disabilities, $20,000 for self-evaluation planning. Transfer 210, the Council on Aging Utilities, $13,000. Transfer 211, Essex Tech to Police Maintenance Building, $15,000. Transfer 212, multiple accounts to Police MIS Communications, $16,750. Transfer 213, free cash to Police Door Upgrades, $61,0518. So one appointment, 5:30. Matthew Heffron, 32 Valley Lane, to the Planning Board as an associate member until 31, 2028. That's to go to P&amp;D, Planning and Development. Following items are coming out of the respective committees, Budget and Finance. Transfers 207, 208, ordinance 191. Orders 653, 654, 664. License and permits, the following applications, 237, 239, 240, 241, and 242. Ordinance 187 and ordinance 195. Planning and Development, appointments 526, 528, 524, and 525. Communications 577, 599, communications 600, excuse me, yeah, and communication 601. Public Works and Safety, ordinance 194. Orders 661, 662, 663, 665, 666, and 667.
Motion to approve with just one addition, which is Committee of the Whole to Communication 606, FY '25 mid-year budget report.
Second.
You got it. Okay, thank you. So motion made by Counselor Zied, seconded by Counselor Preston, to accept the consent agenda with the exception of adding for Communication 606.
And collectively to receive and file the mayor's update.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Change to zero, and that would get us to the regular agenda.
It does.
And that would be the communications that were the late files.
Motion collectively to table Communications 608 and 609.
Second.
Okay, so motion made and seconded to table Communications 608 and 609. Any further, there's no discussion, it's non-debatable. Do we need to do a roll call on our table, or voice vote, fine?
Voice vote's fine.
Voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, great, thank you. And that would lead us to Communication 607, I believe.
That late file? Yeah, that was already.
Oh, BNF, all right.
Went to BNF.
Accepted and going to BNF. I stand corrected, thank you. Okay, we are moving right along. That would get us to orders.
Correct. Order 660, which has been here since the last meeting, was moved to this meeting. It's a gift acceptance, Steven Lynch Park Bench for $5,000. No, no, approve.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, hearing none. It's money, do a roll call.
Okay. So on approving order 660, Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright? He's not here still. Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Dunleavy?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That leads us to Order 659, Mr. President, it's a gift acceptance, Portview and Rec Foundation, 20740.
Motion to continue to February 13th, 2025. Second.
Okay, motion to continue to the 13th, made Counselor Zied, seconded by Counselor Harmon. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you.
Next is Order 669, which is the Bashaw Farms HOA Agreement with a Letter of Indemnification.
Motion to move to PWS.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor McCauley, seconded by Counselor Granis, to refer to Public Works and Services. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
Next would be Order 67, which is the Police Cruiser Lease Order for $128,000.
Motion to refer to Budget and Finance.
Second.
Okay, further discussion? Motion made and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Order 671?
Next is Order 671, which is the Curtis Fund Committee, ordinance estimated by Counselor McCauley.
Motion seconded to Community Services.
Motion made and seconded to refer to Community Services. Any discussion? Counselor Khan?
Can I make a friendly, can we make that Committee of the Whole, please?
No. Committee of the Whole.
Okay, motion made to refer to Community Services and Committee of the Whole. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. All right, ordinances.
A second reading of Ordinance 179, which is the zoning amendment, so-called ADUs. There is one change. I'll read into the record on page five. That would be Section 22-C, Standards for All Accessory Dwelling Units. Paragraph 1A, unit size. The last clause is stricken. And that's what is stricken, in other words, and shall not contain more than two bedrooms. That is deleted going forward, and as I understand it from the city solicitor, she has ruled it's not a material change. We can go forward with the second reading.
Motion to approve as amended?
Second.
A point of order, so when she says proceed with the second reading, you mean this is now a first reading, and then there'll be another reading? Talk to her directly, I mean, I understand completely what she said, but.
Yeah, as Rich said, having the same question exactly, I reached out to Karis just to get her opinion on it, whether or not it was an issue or not for first or second reading. She felt it was perfectly fine to make this adjustment here on second reading without turning it into a first reading, if you will.
Okay, I'll yield for the moment, thank you.
Just for those following at home, can we just state again what the change was?
So it's a clause that's dropped, it's been stricken in its Section 22C, Standards for ADUs. Paragraph 1A, which is relating to unit size. Maybe I could read the whole sentence, it'd make more sense.
Thank you.
The gross floor area of the ADU shall not exceed the lesser of one-half or the gross floor area of the principal dwelling unit, or, and this is where it's pertinent, or 900 gross square feet, comma, and this is stricken, and shall not contain more than two bedrooms. So now it just reads, or 900 gross feet. The bedroom qualification is deleted.
Counselor Lane?
I just don't.
Oh, go right ahead then, sure. Counselor Harmon, sorry, didn't see that.
Thank you, President. Just as a sponsor, I wanted to give an update, to put this in a little bit of context and welcome other questions, and we're happy to have a direct report here to help. As we talked about on the first reading, we are ahead of the schedule of the state in terms of their release of final regulations. That process is completed. The regulations are scheduled to be posted on the 31st by the Secretary of State. Through that process, we provide a couple public comments and some written comment from the city to try to move those regulations in a direction that we thought made more sense for our municipality and for others. Just to give a brief summary of the things that I think really apply most to Newburyport, some positive, some neutral, and some, you know, wait and see. But under the positive, the regulations affirm our Dcod, DoD, and the Fruit Street Historic District will allow for some local control. That was a little bit in question in the original. What was not clarified to the extent that we felt like we could take action to amend this further was the applicability of single-family. Still ambiguous in terms of principal dwelling, single-family zoning district, things like that. So we, as sponsors, elected not to make any additional changes, even though there may be challenges to what we've written, which would apply only to a single-family. We think that, you know, it's unclear, so making a change without understanding what that change should be did make sense to us. They removed the language around flag stop bus stations, which essentially means that where the bus, the flag stop is, will account as a bus station, but not the entire route. So we'll have a new half-mile radius around those stops, which also answers some of the questions that we've talked about around what if those stops change location. And then finally, the bedroom count was deemed to be unenforceable by the city. We could leave it in. It would put our zoning administrator in the awkward position of having to ignore what's in the amendment. So it was the one change that we thought was clear enough, that we wanted to set it up to be in, as tied up sort of relationship to the state regulations as possible.
procedure, unless, of course, that mimics what the state is putting out, which is less than two bedrooms. Is that accurate?
If I go through the chair?
Please.
For the President. Yeah, that's exactly right. In essence, there are a couple of restrictions that they put in the regulations, density, the number of limitations on the number of occupants, things like that that we can apply. So, here, the bedroom count is something that, in essence, we'd be putting something on the books, as I think Council Harmon had noted, we'd be putting something on the books that essentially the zoning administrator could not necessarily enforce. And so, the best practice here, we recommend, is actually removing that provision from what's being adopted, rather than having something on the books that is inconsistent with the regulations that have now been finalized.
So, just legally, I just want to make sure that we're not going to have to go back to reading number one with the change of this meat and potatoes. How sure are we?
And she was comfortable with this change being made here, and that it did not require another reading, that this could, it still continues as the second reading on the amendment that, as the clerk had mentioned, this is not substantive as a change.
Okay.
Council Khan.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Council President, and thank you to my sponsor for kind of summarizing what the final EOHLC regulations were. In terms of the bedrooms and the fact that we even had that in there, I do want to also say that in-law apartment ordinance that we had before didn't have a bedroom limitation. This was our attempt in just trying to create, and at the time, it just seemed like, oh, what could we do to make sure that, you know, maybe controlling the number of people that you would expect in the ADU? So, I think there was just an attempt to look at occupancy, and at the end of the day, I think it will dictate by itself, you know, what the square footage looks like, and I think that's where the state's leaning on. You know, it's really about the size, the massing. What I am happy to see in the EOHLC final regulations is they did put an amendment where communities can put more dimensional requirements around, and they added this as a red line, accessory structures, which is what we see ADUs detached ones look like. So, what this means to me is, after we pass the second reading, is to work and continue working with the planning department to see other aspects that they have now allowed some municipal control. Because we've already started this reading, we want to get this done, so we have something on the books, and we're not going to be exposed to the state. So, we really feel like this is still our best foot forward in compliance with all the work we did before, but now knowing that there are some other avenues for us to review and look at in terms of additional types of considerations we want to make as we have ADUs. They've also added things in historic districts, you know, things that you could control with ADUs. So, this is more work to be done, and I just want to say we are going to take it on after we pass this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Council Zied, then Council McCauley.
I just had quick three things. One is, so obviously, it is positive that they pulled back a little bit on the bus route. I always thought that was a little bit insane. But my question would be, how are bus stops created? I mean, it may seem like a dumb question, but I mean, if a new bus, if the MEEVA decides they want to stop somewhere, can they just stop anywhere and call it a bus stop? In which case, our zoning is sort of interdependent on something that we don't. I looked in Unicode, I don't see that we designate bus stops. For example, I have one in my ward on Water Street, just, it's been there for a long time. I don't know how it became one, because it's always been one. It's just a question. The second one is, on the dimensional controls, is the implication that you can have dimensional controls that are specific to ADU accessory structures as its own use number, and then you can have its own? Is that where this is going, or is that too far?
All right, so two questions so far for Director Port.
As far as the routes go, in effect, the zoning administrator would have to look at the current bus stops that are designated, not, you know, just somebody's pulling the thing and wants to flag it down, but actually just a designated stop that they use. That would have a half-mile radius around it, and we would always be looking at the current maps that are being used. So, we know that the route gets changed periodically, once in a while, but those official stops would be the ones that get the half-mile radius as opposed to the entire corridor, which is what we originally.
But I mean, MEEVA could decide this is a new stop.
That's correct, and I don't know how, the discrepancy essentially is that we have to look, the zoning administrator would have to look at what's applicable, the time of the zoning application.
Okay. And, I mean, just not to be esoteric, but if a bus stop gets removed, is a unit sans parking now out of compliance? I don't think they've really thought or understand how zoning works. It's my point, it's not to cast versions at anybody in this room, I'm just trying to point out, I don't think they get it, how zoning works, so it's really frustrating. And, you know, the route versus, for my ward, it's material in both directions, actually. A half-mile is the ward, at least for mainland, so that this is just frustrating. And the dimensional controls one is also, you know, because previously, we thought, okay, it has to meet the underlying uses, dimension controls, but now it sounds like they're.
If I could, perhaps if we could elaborate, what they're saying essentially is, you can have rules and regulations for accessory structures. They're not necessarily, you can have unique regulations for ADUs per se, because as you always know, there can't be disparate treatment of the ADU compared to the principal use under LEAD. But what they have said is, you can, and they recognize that we might want to as local communities, as Newburyport's had for a long time, dimensional standards for accessory structures that are smaller in nature and could be closer to the lot line. So, they've recognized that there's essentially a tier here, and that it's reasonable to have for accessory structures, rather than, say, accessory dwelling units. Now, it may capture, because of its placement, these ADUs, right?
Okay. My last thing was just on the process. The two-reading requirement is rule 9B, so if one felt compelled, they could waive rule 9B and eliminate any confusion or potential concern and dispense with that argument altogether.
Council McCauley?
I yield. It was about bus stops.
I nailed the bus stop question.
Yes, Director Port.
Got it.
If I could, just one point that I think is worth noting and maybe emphasizing, I think Council Harmon spoke to you a little bit, and, you know, is, Council, and I want to appreciate both of our sponsors here for, this has been a long process for us. I think we're actually in a very good place in terms of where the state is, having been able to sort of run this as best we can in parallel with where the state's been going. It's worth noting, I think, that we're holding firm on the single-family. The interpretation here, we understand that there's a district that's a single-family district, that's what's triggered geographically, but the definition of principal dwelling, we have maintained, our legal council's maintained, and the council, I think, here as a body, we've maintained in this zoning amendment, that single-family is the one that becomes eligible for an accessory dwelling unit, as opposed to, say, two-family, multifamilies, et cetera. So, while there is some ambiguity still in the EOHLC regulations that have been issued, at least, I will say this myself, I feel confident that the statutory language is written in the singular in several instances, so it is reasonably defensible to have that as a single-family only, rather than trying to extrapolate or go beyond that, as I think some of the ambiguous AOHLC regulations are, in making it sound as if possibly two-families or multifamilies lots would also be eligible, and that may be beyond the scope of the original statute. So, I think we're in a good place here in terms of referencing the single-family the way that we did.
Thank you, Director Port. Any further discussion?
Who was the first and second on that, if I might ask? First, one, two? Thank you. Yes.
Hearing none, we'll have a roll call.
So, roll call, just clear on the second reading with the clause stricken, as aforementioned. Council McCauley.
No.
Council Preston.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Zied.
No.
Council Donahue.
Yes.
Council Granis.
Yes.
Council Hammond.
Yes.
Council Khan.
Yes.
Council Lane.
Yes.
Council Cameron.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Eight, two, one.
Eight to two.
To the second reading of ordinance 193, which is amending chapter 5 with respect to the term for the electoral inspector.
Motion approved on second reading.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Okay, approving the second reading of ordinance 193. Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council Preston.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Zied.
Yes.
Council Donahue.
Yes.
Council Granis.
Yes.
Council Hammond.
Yes.
Council Khan.
Yes.
Council Lane.
Yes.
Council Cameron.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
That would lead us to committee items.
Is there any interest in doing public works and safety first?
I did have the city solicitor run the beyond remotely, and I don't know that she is.
Okay, it's all right, I just thought I'd offer. All right, budget and finance, motion to approve, transfer 207.
Second.
Transfer 207 is a transfer from free cash in the amount of $89,671, in addition to a reappropriation of a project fund, the NHS, Newburyport High School Elevator Control 693, for a grand total going to a water heater replacement at the high school for $159 in total. So, the committee took this up at our meeting on January 16th. In presence, we had the superintendent, we also had the facilities manager, Mr. McSweeney, and we basically discussed what happened. To make a long story short, this is the primary water heater at the high school, it is responsible for providing hot water to the entire building. It failed. They were in a position where they needed to restore hot water in a timely fashion, so they reached out to two contractors. One was not in a position, or they may have even reached out to more, but they talked to two. One was not in a position to be able to help, one was, and so they ended up contracting with that firm to replace the water heater, which they have already done. In the process of doing so, they expended $159,000, and they did not feel like they had the funds sufficient within the school budget in order to be able to cover it, and that is what tried to make these funds available. So, in terms of the source funds, free cash, I think we're all familiar with, it's available for any legal expenditure. The elevator control project ended up with the $69,000, but the schools had leftover funds, I think, understanding from our committee at the end of FY '24. So, they completed that project from their own funds, and that left the $69,000 available for further reappropriation. We did explore, you know, school choice. We were presented with, I think, an opinion that's been seen before, that was being opined on by the school's attorney, which is also a Murphy firm, but I don't believe the same one, and they made the argument that school choice could not be used in this way. We probed a little bit around that. We also asked if this funding was not to come through, what would it mean for the schools, and effectively, they would need to pay for this. Well, no specific things were given, it was said that it would be painful to do so. Last thing I can tell you is, the new unit is supposedly much more efficient. The old unit was a constant heating, and this one is more of an on-demand type situation, although more of a commercial scale, large scale, and it's highly efficient. And they did follow procurement, but because this was an emergency situation, procurement has obviously provisions. The committee did ultimately vote to recommend to you approval, three to zero.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? Council McCauley?
Yeah, a question. Am I to read this correctly, that the $69,000 from the elevator controls, that was not used, so it's already been allocated and set aside for the schools in that particular item, and the $89,000 is really the free, only the free cash, the net new that we're talking about here?
Yes, the 89 is free cash, the 69 is, you know, once we approved that transfer in the last fiscal year, it moved to a project account, but it sits there until unused, it is available to be moved.
Thank you for the clarification.
Council Donahue?
Thank you. Just a quick question. So, the elevator funds, you said that the project was completed, was it fully completed? I mean, they didn't need any of that for maintenance, future maintenance, or anything like that? I mean, I just worry about the elevators, like, we need to make sure we have those, you know, supported, right? So, I just wanted to make sure that was vetted.
Yes, to the best of our knowledge, the other project was full, complete, done. That was a specific capital project, so it was a point-in-time project, and that has been done. As far as maintenance goes, that's a different story. You can't, we didn't probe too far into what they're holding maybe back for maintenance in the future, but.
But the project got what it needed.
It did, yes.
Okay. I yield, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Preston.
Yeah, so, on the point about the utilization of choice funds, I read in the newspaper, actually, that the mayor was very much in favor of utilizing choice funds for this, and was in possession of a legal opinion from the city solicitor that choice funds could be utilized for this project. Was that discussed at the committee?
Not directly. We only received a copy of one opinion that was presented by the superintendent. I did have that posted to the meeting, so if you wish to read that one, you may. We did not receive an opinion from the mayor. If one exists, we certainly can take it as a communication and bring it in if we wish.
Would be like.
Council McCauley?
Yeah, so, I did not read our solicitor's note, right, but I do have some experience with this in terms of choice. And choice funds, the opinion that was submitted was really a copy-paste from the MGL of what the definition of choice is and how it can be used. It really doesn't have much of an opinion, other than identifying what it is. Choice funds, by its nature, need to be spent on the general education of the children in the school system at the time. And so, the nature of choice is that it's a subsidy from other communities to us, to, as I said, as a subsidy to help educate their kids. It's intended as part of the legal opinion that they got, that this money is to be spent. It should be spent subsidizing the educational environment going forward, for the host community to support those choice kids that come to our community going forward. That being said, over time, the schools have been spending choice funds, but really, they're spending choice funds from the current balance of what it is today versus what they have in their reserve accounts going forward. Schools are a different beast when it comes to budget items, because it's a single entity on the bottom. They, by right, have the ability to shift accounts and balances around going forward, obviously, with the approval of the school committee going forward. The point of all of that is that if the schools wanted to leverage and pay these bills and would be forced to do that, there is a mechanism for them internally to be able to shift some funds around, whether they tap into school choice funds or not going forward. But, you know, when we look at overall where the numbers are, we did give the schools $37 million this year, and looking to maybe find $89,000 isn't that big a stretch going forward. When we also consider that in previous years, when the city council has said no for certain capital items, like an infield groomer, and a custom lawnmower, and a snow thrower attachment, as well as some upgrades to the gym, all about the $70,000, $80,000 range. Going forward, they've been able to shift their own monies around to be able to find this small amount of money going forward. So, I'm not sure I answered the council question. School choice money can't be spent directly, but it can, it can be allocated elsewhere along the way to be able to do that. And, you know, that's a decision we have to make and they have to make as well. Thank you for the time.
Officer Zied?
Did you have your hand? I just wanted to, we did, I did, we didn't ask that, or I did ask that a little bit. Now, I'm not speaking as the committee chair, just my opinion. I mean, you know, we can always mix up accounting with appropriation. I mean, accounting is moving money between accounts, and they can do that, and I think, to the council's point, there's ways they could have done that and chose or didn't feel like they could or wanted to in this situation. But my core frustration with this, I voted to support it, it's a water heater, you need hot water in a building. But the question about, that came up was foresight. You know, we did ask about the life of a unit, the council asked about that, and so these things are fairly predictable, I think. I mean, they have a warranty, and then they say it's a 10-year warranty, and they say you'd only get another five years out of them. This one, I think, was 22 years old. So, foresight's a little frustrating, that you can kind of see these things coming, but at the end of the day, we're always going back to the free cash well, and, you know, when there's money there, it sort of, it works out, and if someday there isn't, or And if someday there isn't, or we have too many demands on it, I don't, you know, you figure out what will happen. So I do think that's something that maybe could be probed in the facilities report, and just trying to get at this stuff, it's, you know, it's just not that hard to me. It just depends on what the goal is, you know? If the goal is to just keep the lid on it, and we fixed it, it's okay, then we succeeded. If the goal is to have some foresight and say, hey, we're probably going to need $150,000 next year for, I mean, the building we're standing in probably needs at least $150. It would be nice to get ahead of some of these things instead of being reactive.
Council Khan?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to piggyback on the chairs, budget and finance chairs' comments. I think that was a really good conversation, and also a reminder to the administration that we do have a facilities report that we're owed annually, and that really, that should be a planning document as well. And this is the opportunity to see it that way, as opposed to as a reporting, oh, we gotta do that annual report on the building maintenance. Let's really use it as a tool. And mainly, this is for the administration to hear, so that we are in front of these things. Thank you.
Council Lane?
Also a piggyback. It's troubling, and like the Ward Two council said, that we had $69,000 in that, and now that's depleted. So in the future, if something happens to the elevators, we're going to draw from something else. This, to me, seems like a project that would have been a perfect candidate for Essar funds. So I'm confused as to where that would have been spent, or some sort of explanation around that as well. So I guess, I mean, I'm not going to oppose this. You need hot water at a middle school. But just frustrated to see where the source of the funds are coming from, when we had so much money allocated in Essar, and how this kind of slipped by being a 22-year-old water heater. So I just, I'd love to see the facilities report as a whole be a little bit more detailed, especially with the age of the Mullen School, the high school. I mean, we're just looking at all these projects. My question out loud is, where did the Essar funds go?
Council McCauley?
Yeah, just a quick question, just a quick statement on the facilities report. The facilities report is due by the end of February, right? Last day of February? And I think what, and, you know, this has been an evolution of a report going forward. And I think what the council is signaling to the administration is that we probably need to see some depreciation values of some of these assets that we have out there. What I mean by that is, you know, we have water heaters that might be 20 years old, that, yes, they work great, and then they fail, and that stuff happens along the way. But we probably should get more to a sliding scale that says, we think there's going to be planned maintenance of X for these particular items going forward. And that would be up to us to start to Q and A this when the facilities report comes out. So again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Further discussion? Okay, so the motion was made on the transfer 207. Motion made and seconded to approve. Do a roll call.
Roll call on approving transfer 207. Council McCauley?
Yes.
Council Preston?
Yes.
Council Shan?
Yes.
Council Z?
Yes.
Council Donahue?
Yes.
Council Granis?
Yes.
Council Hammond?
Yes.
Council Khan?
Yes.
Council Lane?
Yes.
Council Cameron?
Motion to approve transfer 208. Second. 208 is a $68,000 transfer this year from multiple budget contingency lines to the Teamsters department head contract. As you know, contracts are treated as approval of the first year constitutes acceptance of the contract. So just to give you some quick overview, this is a union that actually, it's referred to as a department heads union, but there are actually other people in it as well. Some of the engineer positions and so forth are considered part of this union. In aggregate, there are 20 individuals that belong to this union. This is a three-year contract. It is slightly backdated to the beginning of the current fiscal year, so they've been operating essentially without a contract for roughly six months. You heard during some of the public comment that they have been enduring to try and find a compromise here and find a contract for quite some time, and that's what's being presented here. In terms of the particulars of the contract itself, as I mentioned, it's a three-year with a roughly six-month retro. There are increases in each year, broken down across COLAs and market adjustments. So in the first year, there are no COLAs, as you heard, and there are market adjustments ranging between 0 and 15%. If you average all of that, it's a 4.3 increase percent, 4.3% increase in year one. In year two is 3.6%, and in year is 3.4%. And so that averages out to 3.76% per year. Information was provided in the packet in terms of which market adjustments were made to which positions, and then what the COLAs would look like there. The finance director presented to us, as has become customary and helpful, sort of an update on what's going on with the contract. Some of the changes, I think, are fairly pro forma. The holidays, you know, renaming things like Indigenous Peoples' Day was done. There was a little change on the close of City Hall, if there's a holiday falling on Friday. So those were really not subjects of great discussion. One area that was of discussion was the vehicle travel allowance. Previously, each member of this union was being given, or those that are, pardon me, I shouldn't say every member, but those that this applied to were being given for a $25 a month stipend for the use of their vehicle. For those individuals, that's been trimmed back to 275, but the exact difference has been added to their salaries. So when you look at it on an in-year basis, it's a fairly flat change. It just goes from here to there. But the primary reason that this was an area of negotiation was that some of the members wished for it to become part of their base salary, because that then factors into retirement and pensions and things of that nature. So while the year in, if you call it, or in-year change would essentially be delta of zero, over the long period, of course, you will see the effects in the retirement system and then backing into the city in terms of the allocations that it has to make. Stipends have also been changed a little bit. Again, some things that were previously considered stipend responsibilities, such as the assessor preparing tax billing filings, have simply been rolled into the salary and rolled into the description. So again, I think along sort of the same lines there. And there were some changes in terms of the cameras and monitoring, which is, of course, remain, just because that's been the subject of conversation here. That was Article 23-6. So we did talk about this in committee. Obviously, we discussed the financial impact, the one, the first year changes about $70,000. In the next two years, it's roughly the same, you know, give or take, when you switch out for market adjustments, for COLAs, and again, some other things. And again, all this information was provided. The presentation was posted and all of those things. So in the end, the committee basically deliberated, and we came to a conclusion of two to one on this one. I was the dissenting vote over concerns about the budgetary impact, and I'll be happy to talk more about that. The last thing I'll say is this, if, you know, with the conclusion of this, in any which direction, there will be one last outstanding contract, and that's firefighters who are also expired as of June 30, 2024. We don't have an exact idea of when that's coming, but that would be the final one. So if you're looking at the contingencies as you contemplate approving this, that's what is left. So two to one, and try and best with any questions that we have.
Thank you, Council Khan.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. Yeah, I would just ask my colleagues, you know, Appendix A kind of gives a good snapshot on how the next, that the years are going to look like in terms of these positions. And, you know, my question was more around the market adjustment. You know, that was the kind of launch, it wasn't done, I think, in some of the previous contracts in my time. So that seems to be, you know, one of the things, and I think we heard, you know, there are, it's the people, it's keeping kind of current with what's a competitive salary. I will say, though, I do take to heart the public comment and the person who gave it, having worked with the city engineers. So we know not every process is perfect, and I think I know that and I hear that. But I think this is a very transparent way to see exactly where positions had some adjustment due to a market assessment. One of the things I did ask about is, do we expect that at the end of three years, are we going to have to true-up? And maybe true-up is not the right word. Will there need to be another assessment? Are we paying them on par with everyone else? So I feel like we're kind of in a situation, we obviously are not at the bargaining table. We are here approving a process that the complexity of it is not appreciated as much by me, but I know it's not easy. So my reason for supporting it is I feel like this seems, across the board, in looking at this, it seems like a fair process. I still think that, and I challenge the administration, in looking at exactly how we are structuring departments overall, that might be the theme later on as we discuss a few other things, but really, this will not be the answer to what we're all hoping to address when it's budget time. And that is really where and how is our budget going to be sustainable, given what we need to do. I don't think the solution is for us here to not approve this. I think what it is, is really understanding, you know, that we have positions that we've created, or the administration has created. And I do think there's time to look at those positions, to look at those departments, and really those functions, and understand, are there ways for coordination? Are there ways to be more efficient and financially more mindful, knowing that we're going to be entering some tough times? So that's what I wanted to say, but I thought this was very well-presented and very transparent on how we got to where we are here with this contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Donahue?
Thank you. So first, I just want to say thank you to the at-large council for stating a lot of what I was thinking. But I did have a question through the president, to the chair. So you'd mentioned like a 0 to 14 or 15%, and so that leaving like a 4% average. What does the 0 mean? Like, are there people that got nothing in the first year? Is that what that means?
Yes, that's correct. In order to land at a 4% average, the 0 to 15% range, so yes, there's no COLA in the first year. So nobody got a COLA. Market rate adjustments, some were zero, and the schedule was posted there. So yes, indeed, in order to get to that 4% average, some did not receive any in the first year. And then in the second and third year, there are COLAs at least for all, and some modest market adjustments for some as well.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yes, it does. It's the question. So if it's okay, I have another, you know. So I guess what troubles me is similarly to what was stated, you know, we're not part of the negotiating conversation, and we're not, we don't have a seat at that table. We just get to vote on accepting it or not, which is definitely frustrating. We don't know what those conversations look like. We don't know, you know, I don't know that we get to, you know, if we even conduct like performance reviews, and if that gets, you know, factored into who gets chosen for, you know, an increase and who doesn't in the first year, et cetera. I mean, based on public comment, it definitely sounds like there were some flaws, and some hard-working, valuable staff maybe were overlooked. And that is also troubling, because it begs the question, well, you know, what does one have to do to be recognized for their commitment to the city? You know, and how, how does that incentivize the valuable employees we do have? So the whole thing is a little bit, like I said, troubling, but, you know, I think to the at-large councilor's point, it doesn't mean that we, you know, shouldn't be approving it, because we don't want to leave them with nothing for another, however long it takes. So I guess I just wanted to make my point that it's, we're kind of put in this position that I feel is a little bit unfair, without having more information and being part of the process. So I'll just deal with that.
Council Shan?
I'll say it.
Okay. Council Khan?
Are you sure?
Well, Council Z had a hand up before your buck.
Thank you. I just want to clarify, because I am, for the previous council that spoke, that, you know, again, I point to Appendix A. So what you saw in the first year, even though there was a 0% COLA adjustment, that market adjustment for everybody, the minimum was 3%, and then the maximum was 15% market adjustment. Only one did not get adjustment, and that was the local building inspector. I just want to clarify that. Then the subsequent years, it's a 2.5% COLA adjustment and 3% COLA adjustment. So I just want to clarify that. It wasn't like no one didn't get any adjustment. It was just one, and we know who it is. I just said it.
I see.
So it was a local building inspector.
Okay, understood.
Okay, Council Zee?
Thank you. I just wanted to offer my thoughts, three things, hopefully quickly. One is, I'm glad that in these conversations, now the budget makes an entry or an appearance, because, I mean, in a lot of ways, the budget is the culmination of many months and many decisions that are made along the way, and that's consistently, or that has been the challenge. And I get frustrated, because efficiencies are always just over the next horizon, but we always have to make this decision now, because that's what we can do, and we do. And then we kind of, there's a lot of unhappiness, I guess, or frustration when the budget comes out, but then we say, well, we've made these commitments, we have to honor them. And surely, legally, we do, but also logically, irrespective of how any one of us votes, if the body approves, then that's the commitment the city makes. So that's number one. Number two is the role of the council. We are at the table. This is our seat. And so it's, yes, it's frustrating that we don't get to sit in all the meetings and say, well, can you bring it to here? Can you do this? But this is the process. This is your bite at the apple. If you feel comfortable with this, that's fine. If you don't, as I do, I was the dissenting vote in committee, then you're obligated. And the third and final thing is, I just want to be clear on why I'm voting no. It's because I feel very strongly we need to be consistent, and we've had several union contracts roll through, and it's really great to say, well, yes to one and no to another. So just in case anybody cares, my number is 3%. It needs to average to 3% over three years. Average, if you want to have one year that's six and then offset it with a year that's one, fine, I can live with that, but I need to come to 3% over three years. This exceeds that, so I won't support it. I think we all know there are always looming contracts. They come and they go, but no one has explained, absent, the only thing that would make me change my mind on something like that is if somebody could finally show me an offset somewhere else, we're not going to do this, or we give up on this, or we're not going to do this initiative because we value this and this is what we want to stick with. And that argument never seems to happen, and then it comes to a head during the budget. So I think consistency should matter, so that we don't upset anybody or make them think that there's favorites between, say, department heads and those who work diligently in the city as well.
Council McCauley?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. So, you know, we do have a bit of an input into the negotiation strategy. We've been telegraphing our objectives through these dates to the negotiation teams for quite some time. I think we've telegraphed that we're looking for lower percentages overall. You know, if you talk about 2 or 3%, it's above that. Going forward, we talk about things like travel allowances, where we've been told for years that they were really to diffuse the cost of travel going forward, and now when we lower them, we actually roll them into the salary. So we should have called it a stipend along the way to begin with going forward. I hate travel allowances, just upfront. That's my telegraphing into the message book going forward. I look at these things, and I say, can we afford it? And overall, the answer is, well, we have money for labor, but when push comes to shove, come June, we may not have money for projects going forward. And I think we need to understand that going forward. In terms of the contract itself, I think the contract is a very good contract structurally going forward. I think the transparency that is laid out and elimination of some of the stipends, as well as embracing the fact of cameras and technology use as monitoring tools, et cetera, along the way. I think all of those things are excellent and will be protective of workers going forward. But at the end of the day, when inflation is going to be running at 2.5% a year for the next three years, with the projections from the US government on that, and we're averaging out 11%, I think the numbers are skewed a little bit on that. But thank you.
Thank you. Council Khan?
Yeah, sorry. I just wanted to just clarify a little bit. We did have a few other contracts come before us, and this is one of the things that I even pointed out was a trend. I think the Teamsters one was before, that we did a couple of meetings ago. And this market adjustment is a trend I saw with that contract as well. So while we typically have said, you know, like that 3% number, that too had the same, you know, increment between 0 to 6%. So I just feel like that, you know, it's just noteworthy to point out, there's kind of a different process. But I do agree with the Ward Five councilor, that I think the process seems a little bit more trying to be robust in what it's accomplishing in personnel. And I do think, and I appreciate the dialogue here and the comments said here, that, yeah, this is the point, the final, I guess, decision we make. We could all say no, send them back to the negotiation table. And while I understand and appreciate not everyone's happy with this process, I personally feel like my responsibility is to ensure the city's running, and that's these salaries. So I can't just stand here and say no, because this is my time to be at that negotiating table. That's not negotiating. To me, negotiating is being in the room, being at that table, being able to hear the conversations. I don't see this here as that role. So I just want to clarify from my position. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Council Preston?
Yeah, I'll be very brief, because a lot of what I wanted to say has already been said. I, too, am going to be a no on this, and I mostly want to speak to those hard-working individuals that are affected by this in the city. You know, ultimately, I said no to the Ask Me contract, not because I don't think those people need raises, and very deserving of them. However, I recently heard the mayor say that he is hoping to hold the line at 3% increases for the next fiscal budget, and, you know, anything that comes in above 3% is going to make it extraordinarily difficult on the other ends to be able to hold to that 3% increase. And while I look at this contract, the Ask Me contract, I also have to keep in the back of my mind the firefighter's contract and the teacher's contract. And I want to reiterate that if those come in above 3%, I will be no's on those contract negotiations, well, for the transfers for those contract negotiations to go forward as well. So again, it's not that I don't think people deserve raises, it's more that I think that this is not sustainable for the city, and therefore, I'm going to be a no. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Council Khan? Further discussion? Counselor Khan.
So I just have to, I don't know if I was clear. It's not raises. I mean, let's be honest. Okay, market adjustment, we could all disagree. To us, it's looking and we're saying that it's like a raise. It was very clear, and this is, I think, the point, when, you know, if we feel market adjustment is an avenue to get raises, then maybe, you know, we have the union contract person negotiator over here. But the fact that we bought into, or that there is a process of market adjustment, and for those of us who are working in employment and doing our own advocacy, as I am right now with my company, and trying to really be acknowledged for being paid at a rate in which we all feel like we should be compensated, that's a real issue. It's not a raise. And I think we really need to understand that. It's easy in our position to think these are raises, but in many cases, they are not. And that was what was clear in the conversation and the presentation that was provided to us. So I just want to really clarify that terminology.
Counsel Shand.
Thank you. And I'll reiterate what my fellow Outlarge Counselor said. Market adjustments are not raises. They are based on what other communities and other folks in other areas with the same job are getting. That's what a market raise is, just balancing out what you're getting. So I too will be supporting this because I too believe we need to keep the city running, and I appreciate the work that all the department heads are doing.
I think we're discussed out. So motion was made, motion was seconded, discussion has been had. That would get us to a, we'll do a roll call.
Roll call on approving Transfer 208. Counsel McCauley.
No.
Counsel Preston.
No.
Counsel Shand.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
No.
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Granis.
Yes.
Counselor Hahn.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Motion collectively to approve Ordinance 191 and Order 653.
Second.
So these are both related to the new bike share program that we had some conversation and work on last year. So the reason these are taken collectively is because Ordinance 191 is an amendment to an ordinance, section, Chapter 2, Article 2, Section 394, revolving funds. This establishes a bike share revolving fund. And then, because in the past, we used to reestablish these funds every year, now we've codified them in ordinance, and the only thing that we do is each year we set a spending limit. It's like a credit card limit. And so Ordinance 191 establishes this new fund. Order 653 then sets a limit of $25,000 for the remainder of this fiscal year. At the conclusion of this fiscal year, a new order will come in establishing a new limit for the next fiscal year for all revolving funds, this one included, but the revolving fund itself will endure because it's now codified in ordinance until someday it is changed or removed. So first thing is, why do we need to do something? With the advent of the bike share program, sort of similar to akin to something like parklets, there is revenue expected in the form of bike fees and so forth, user fees, and then there is, of course, expected to be expenditures to support the program, to operate the program, et cetera. And so in contemplating how to handle this best from a municipal finance standpoint, there were two options. There is the model of the receipts reserved for appropriation. That is the current model we utilize for parklets. So we have the fund, and money goes in, and then there's a one-time transfer each year, and then it shows up in DPS's budget. And so that's option one. And option two is to do the revolving fund. We have numerous revolving funds that you're probably familiar with. The Council on Aging has one for maintenance. There's a City Hall Maintenance Fund that takes in money when people rent the auditorium upstairs. So these are the two options. I was the sponsor, so I would just say, it seems a lot more trackable when it's in a revolving fund because it's much easier to see what comes in and what goes out, and it doesn't get mixed into the general fund budget. So you don't lose it in sort of this big DPS, like $2 million budget, and then you've got a $12,000 transfer for bike share. So I think we're all keenly interested in knowing how this thing is going to perform, and that if we're need to need financial support, which was the subject of debate when we passed it, that it would be very transparent. Doesn't mean it can't happen. It just means it really need to come in and be obvious that we're buttressing this fund or we're somehow spending. So the fund is being assigned to the DPS department head because that is the person who has been designated as the owner of the bike share program. On the city side, the $25,000, there is no scientific basis for that number. Nobody knows what this thing is going to make. It just seemed like a starting point. Next year, we can range it up or range it down. If it somehow gets that much money and spends that much money, we can always do a mid-year change to the, we've done this in the past when a fund has gone through. There were, so last thing is, in Ordinance 191 in particular, there were a few other changes. So one is that the tree commission is being stricken. Before anybody has a heart attack, we are not eliminating the tree commission. This, basically, this revolving fund had gone dormant. It just simply wasn't being used from an accounting standpoint. It's not that money wasn't flowing in from donations and whatnot, but rather it was being transferred essentially as a gift, coming into the council, being approved by the council. So that has become, so there isn't any money in it, and there hasn't been any activity in the fund. It's like you have a credit card that hasn't been used in five years. It's that sort of situation. So in order to keep the books clean, so to say, that was proposed to be removed, didn't seem to garner any controversy in committee. And then the other one was a modest update to youth services to make it the new name, Newburyport Recreation Youth Services, but the other things don't change. So in the end, 191 and 653 were recommended collectively by the committee, three to zero.
Thank you, Counsel Z. Any discussion? Counsel Preston.
Yeah, as the former chair of the Tree Commission, this did catch my eye when you were eliminating the revolving fund because frankly, we used it very regularly on my time during the, well, at my time when I was on the Tree Commission. I just want to be certain that someone has checked with the Tree Commission to be certain that they are okay with the elimination of their revolving fund.
Do you want to speak to that?
Go ahead. Director Manning.
Good evening. So that revolving fund was originally set up really to collect donations to pay for trees. But yeah, the occasional insurance settlement would come in. But all of those, all of those receipts have their own accounting treatment already. There's no need for a revolving fund. If it's a gift, it goes into a gift and donation account after it's accepted by this body. If it's an insurance settlement, that's its own account. It would go in and get paid out through there. The, we have a tree planting budget in DPS. So really, what would go through the revolving fund would, there's really nothing left, which is why really for the past eight or nine years, we haven't even requested a spending limit for the fund.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, so these are collective. One of them's in ordinance. We'll do a roll call. So Ordinance 191 and 653, Order 653.
Order 653. Okay. Again, collectively approving Ordinance 191, Order 653. Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Shand.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counsel Granis.
Yes.
Counsel Hahn.
Yes.
Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Lane has stepped out.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
To try and expedite, I'll do the next two collectively. Motion to approve Orders 654 and 664.
Second.
So 654 is an E-911 Support and Incentive Grant in the amount of $61,192. While this says grant, and that often invokes thoughts of competitiveness and we ask for money, this is a very formulaic grant that essentially, it's the way the state helps support communities in their 911 operations. And this dollar amount to the penny is exactly the same amount we got last year, and if you feel like betting, it's probably going to be the exact same amount we get next year. It goes to the, to the department, particularly the police, to support, again, E-911 Support and Incentive Grants. So really didn't garner a lot of questions. Committee recommended three to zero. The next one, a little bit more to it, 664 is a grant acceptance for an efficiency regionalization grant. So this one has a lot of great buzzwords in it. So I guess first thing is, this was a product of the prior chief of staff, was essentially the applicant. So there's a little bit of a transition happening here, and I think trying to figure out exactly what this thing looks like. In committee, we, I think we had originally, or started going in the direction that this was all about the school committee, remember the schools in the city potentially consolidating, and we recently did an order that didn't consolidate anything but opened the door for that. What we learned in committee is, well, that's certainly part of this discussion, the centralization potentially of things like IT and what have you between the schools and city. This is actually a broad-based grant that could really apply to any, any, any sort of effort. The other interesting one was the word "regionalization," and so, you know, that's certainly in the conversation, but I think this was viewed as more of a Newburyport-centric internal kind of thing. So how would the process work? So there is no scope. I don't have a, we don't have a scope to share with you because it does not exist yet. There would be obviously a creation of an RFP, and that would be a term or time to refine and discuss what the scope would be. And then an RFP would be issued, and then obviously, once the RFP comes back, then they would pick somebody, and then they would do it. We have until 2026 to spend the fund, so it's not like it's happening tomorrow. We talked about the idea of leading maybe too much and giving the potential, whoever gets this contract, too much direction and trying to pre-bake outcomes, and then on the other hand, maybe not giving them enough so that they don't have no idea what we're even thinking about. So at the end of the day, the committee was certainly, I think, comfortable with accepting the grant, but without having a scope, didn't know what we could present to you and understand that could be controversial. So in the end, we basically recommended approving the grant, but we amended it in committee that, you know, a scope would be presented to the council for approval by order. I just want to be very specific, for approval by order, so not just communicated, but would have a discussion here. The finance director who spoke to this did think with $75,000, there could be a good, you know, decent amount of study, a decent output, and hopefully this could actually be useful and not just a paper pushing exercise. So that was that one, three to zero. So those are the two collectively.
Great, thank you. Can I just ask a logistical question? So the amendment around the scope for the $75,000, is that, we just got that in the minutes somewhere, maybe?
It was, yeah. It's approved subject to scoping, to a scope being presented to the city council for approval by order. And that is, that is listed on the cover page of the committee items, if that helps. It's the very last item on there, and the approvals condition is shown there.
Any further discussion? Yeah, great. I do see that. Thank you. All right. Hearing none for collectively for those orders. We'll do a roll call. It's money and quite a bit of it.
Orders 654 and 664. Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Shand.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counsel Granis.
Yes.
Counsel Hahn.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
And Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Budget, we meet Thursday on our regular schedule. We have one committee of the whole item. It's the mid-year budget, if you're interested. I did, that was a good segue. I just wanted to point out, I was trying this with the clerk's office. On the cover page of budget, I had them put the actual, the votes. So if that's helpful, I will continue to do it, and I'll try and include, if, you know, some amendments are not this short, but I thought this could be an innovation that could help just get it out there. And I know we're always running up against minutes being approved, but I think I can record the vote. So that's, that was, hopefully that's helpful. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Before we move to the next committee, Counsel Z had made mention about moving to the parking clerk amendment, Ordinance 194. The city solicitor is online now. We could do that if that's the wish of the council, or we can just keep going in the order that we're going.
[inaudible].
Keep going in the order we're going?
Yeah.
Get there soon enough.
Yeah, yeah, why?
Well, you asked me a question to keep going. I only, I'm glad to keep going.
We'll keep going, yeah. In the order we're going. All right, so Community Services.
Oh, sorry.
Who's on first?
I was confused for a second there. So nothing coming out tonight, but we did have, the Curtis Fund is now on our, well, the Curtis Fund Committee is now on our docket. I unfortunately have some relatively unexpected travel for our next meeting on the 10th of February, so I'm going to push that discussion to the 24th of February. I also, I think that's a good thing in that it will be very important, I think, to have the trustees join that conversation, and so that will give us plenty of time to be able to ensure that they're available to work with us on this. So February 10th will be canceled for Community Services. February 24th is where we will take up the Curtis Fund Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing to report out of general government. We'll get our scheduling together with Counselor Khan and Granis. The other committees are set, and so there's a couple of slots that we could fit in on a regular basis. We're starting to get a bit of a backlog on several things, but we'll get that scheduled for, before the next meeting, now that we're starting to get back on that schedule. That would lead us to licenses and permits. Counselor Wright's not here, I believe. Counsel McCauley will be covering.
Thank you, Counsel President. I'd like to make a motion to collectively approve Application 237, 239, and 240.
Second.
The, all of these are renewals for secondhand auto licenses. State Automotive at the Circle, Sunoco on Story Ave, as well as Arrow Curry on Pasture Road going forward. They all came before. Their paperwork is in order, their bond's in order, and we had some discussions about their business, all going well, and we recommended three to zero for each one of them for approval.
Any further discussion? We're going to a roll, excuse me, do a voice vote on these?
Sure.
Okay, all those in favor collectively say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. All right, thank you.
Motion to collectively approve Application 241 and 242.
Second.
240, these are both road races. 241 is the annual Joppa Flats Running Frigid Fiver on February 2nd. The organizers were there to review and re-review the things that they've always done on this. This is a repeat customer. They know the drill. They have the map shown accordingly with directions. They know enough to flyer those people who may be impacted by the race along the community. Their insurance is in order along the way. The cancer doesn't care, but we do 5K race going forward. This is a new race, and we spent some time with the applicants here. They have a roadmap out. We probably will assume that they're going to adjust that roadmap as they go forward along the way. For example, their first attempt at this, they had 10 duty officers patrolling the roads for them, and then they realized they couldn't afford that. Now they're down to five, and I'm sure they'll adjust their mapping accordingly along the way. They're moving more towards the streets and the rail trail as everyone does now to kind of minimize traffic impact along the way. But they had their insurance, they had all their other forms. They're very ambitious about getting this off the ground. They're three months in advance, and so we may be able to help them and give them some coaching along the way. We recommended this, two to zero.
Thank you. Any further discussion on these two applications? Hearing none. Voice vote, all those in favor, Application 241 and 242, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, thank you. Counsel?
Motion to approve ordinance 187.
Second.
Point of information, sponsors not here. Rule 12D says that we need an in writing from all sponsors, if I'm interpreting that correctly?
Motion to waive rule 12D, so we can hear the matter. We have two out of the three sponsors, so I think it's a sensible motion.
Second, I'll second that.
Yeah, is it 12?
D is in Delta.
D, yeah. So waiving 12D would...
Point of order, could we collectively waive for ordinance 195 as well? It's the same situation.
So moved.
All right, so is there a second on that?
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay. So for 187 and 195.
All right.
Okay. All right, so back to ordinance 187, motion to waive the rules collectively on both of those, so to waive 12D, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, okay, so we've waived 12D.
Thank you.
And we're...
Motion to approve ordinance 187.
Second.
So ordinance 187 is, excuse me, has some changes to it. It takes our section 13.97 and amends it and defines a block party going forward. It cleans up some other language, and it really gets down to, for repeat events, that it can be a pro forma type of approval than the clerk's office. However, the clerk will update the city council in the consent agenda, and so there is options for any city councilor to pull that out and have it go through committee. There's also the option of the clerk using their better judgment and suggesting that something go through the committee assignment roles as well in the language that it says here. And so, the intent of this is to keep it, the process moving forward and not, and keep our residents and customers happy for block parties that tend to have less and less turnover in terms, and repeat, repeat business. The recommendation on this was two to zero to approve.
Thank you. Further discussion, Council Z?
Yeah, I think the chair did a wonderful job just summarizing. I think this is a broad, part of that broader effort that my, I know I've been making it along with some of my colleagues as well, my co-sponsors and so forth, around streamlining things and protecting the council's time for things where we're really adding value. So that, that's an important function. And the second is, the chair mentioned it briefly, but providing good service really for users. I mean, block parties have been notoriously bad for us. We, you know, they come in late, which puts us in a bind, puts the clerk's office in a bind. These are just residents trying to enjoy themselves. For the most part, we see, we do see a number of repeating block parties, so they, they get the rhythm of, you know, what does it take to close a street and just making sure. And they, they don't get out of any of those things, they still have to get all the sign-offs and all of those things. But if it's a repeat event, there are some here that I think have been getting really good Yelp reviews, I understand, every year, and we hear about those. So delineating block parties was a big aspect of this, and then the second one is, very similar to the few approvals we just made, again, we have professional organizations running events, they get into the, into the rhythm of things, they understand it, if there's no real problems with it, then there seems to be no reason to bring it in and just to say that their paperwork's in order. I think we can trust the clerk's office to check that, and then we get the backstop of having the notifications. And then, yes, I think the clerk's office judgment is really important. I remember when we did the, the big concert here on the waterfront, you know, no one actually really knew what the process was, but everybody felt it should come to the council because of the size and scale, the right decision, I think. So we needed to have a relief in there that somebody could look at something and say, even if it's a 10-person thing, but something about it, the location, the timing, something looks off, then maybe it needs that additional process. So I am excited that I think this, this can produce a positive effect for both, all parties involved, clerk's office, us, and they still need to get the sign-offs and have the insurance and all those things. So I do hope you'll, you'll support it, and I think it has some good checks and balances still remaining.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
It's approving ordinance 187. Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council Preston.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Z.
Yes.
Council Donahue.
Yes.
Council Grantis.
Yes.
Council Hammond.
Yes.
Council Khan.
Yes.
Council Lane.
Yes.
And Council Cameron.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion to approve ordinance 195.
Second.
This is the same type of approach to this for A-frame signs. We've had a number of A-frame signs, they're really those ones that need council relief and special kind of attention. Even when they come for renewals, they actually have to come before the council, even though there may be no complaint, or there may be, you know, as long as the sign fits into the parameters that there are, there may be something that's a little off, meaning it's not directly in front, but it might be, you know, 20 feet away or something like that. All of those things can be taken into account in here by the clerk's office for renewals. And again, there is the relief that has, that any councilor can pull it from the consent agenda and make it go through committee, as well as the clerk's office having the good sense to be able to send it through for the first ones, et cetera, along the way. So this was sponsored as well by Council Preston, as well as Council Wright, and again, it's, it's an attempt of trying to streamline some of this approval process going forward. Our recommendation was two to zero on this.
Thank you. Council Preston.
Yeah, just briefly, this really was born out of a complete, I guess, well, speaking with someone who owns a shop downtown, who was very frustrated with the fact that they needed to come in for a renewal for their A-frame sign, and needed to close their shop to be able to come to, to do that renewal. The, I guess, not chair, the interim, the reporting chair for LNP, did a good job of sort of characterizing it. This is, again, this is, any new A-frame application absolutely still has to come in, they, they still need to work with the clerk's office, and any renewal still has to come through the clerk's office. Any complaints that have been lodged against any particular A-frame, or if there's any material change, would also make this come in front of council. This is simply for the annual renewal of no change, no complaints, no problems for A-frames to give relief to the shop owners downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to note, there's a small squirmers error in the title, should be a D in there, merchandising. Sure that would have gotten caught, would have got put back in the...
Merchandising.
We'll blame Council Wright, since he's not here.
Exactly.
But, yeah, great. Council Donahue?
Thank you. Quick question, if that's okay, to maybe one of this, well, because this is the sponsor this year. With the assurance that, you know, complaint, with, you know, anything that there's a complaint about, it would come before us, where would a complaint go and what would constitute a complaint? I mean, I want to make sure that, you know, when we have complaints that go to ADA coordinator, that that would come through as well.
Council Preston?
Yeah, so complaints, and the clerk could probably help even further with this, but complaints that I'm sort of aware of are, you know, it's constantly down, it's in the wrong place, it's in the walkway, those sorts of complaints all would warrant the, the need for having to come back in front of council. So if we have a chronic offender who is having complaints because they're not taking care of their A-frame, that would necessitate the need for their renewal application back in front of council.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on ordinance 195? Seeing none, roll call.
Roll call on first reading. Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council Preston.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Z.
Yes.
Council Donahue.
Yes.
Council Grantis.
Yes.
Council Hammond.
Yes.
Council Khan.
Yes.
Council Lane.
Yes.
And Council Cameron.
Yes.
Thank you. Pass this first reading. Motion to remove application 238 from committee and to approve?
Second.
This was a secondhand auto application that somehow missed the clerk's, missed the chair's mentioning to the clerk. And so I just, he is in the same boat as everyone else is, in that he's been doing it for multiple years, he's, all of his paperwork is in order, and for one reason or another, it just didn't make the agenda. And timing of these things are very important because they have to hit auctions at the end of the month, et cetera, along the way. Their tax people, as well as their bond people, all need these things by the end of January. So instead of making it, I'm removing it from committee. Thank you.
So are we voting on the motion to remove it first, or remove and approve?
Remove and approve.
And that was seconded by Council Lane. Okay, discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a voice vote, as we have for the others. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. I have nothing further from licenses and permits.
Great, thank you for stepping in there. Planning and Development?
Thank you, Council President. Motion to approve appointment 524, Andrew Shapiro to the Affordable Housing Trust.
Second.
So Mr. Shapiro came in, he has been a member of the Planning and Development, I mean, Planning Board and Affordable Housing Trust member for numerous years. He is proud of the work the AHT has done on rental assistance in the community. He has spoke of the usage of AHT funds to support the Brown School, which we all should know by now is $450,000. The Ward Five Council asked him about his change and thoughts on going from the Y to the Zeta Plan, and he was adamant that, he was just thrilled that we were going to have 100% affordable housing at 30 and 60% AMI. And he also asked about other possibilities in the city, and I think we all know it's getting few and far between places, and possibly some places in Ward Five, but it was a good conversation, and we were glad to have him wanting to continue. So the committee voted three to zero to recommend of approval.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, that would be a roll call, second appointment reading, second reading appointment.
Approving appointment, Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council Preston.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Z.
Yes.
Council Donahue.
Yes.
Council Grantis.
Yes.
Council Hammond.
Yes.
Council Khan.
Yes.
Council Lane.
Yes.
And Council Cameron.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to maybe recuse myself for the council, so you could take the con. Thank you.
Motion to approve appointment 525, Suzanne Cameron to the Affordable Housing Trust.
Second.
Ms. Cameron was here for her fifth time reappointment to the Affordable Housing Trust. She spoke to how proud she was of the lifetime professionals on the AHT who have been dedicated to affordable housing in the community. The Ward Five Council brought up some options on Affordable Housing Trust, and are there any ways that we can be more creative in the community? And as she blatantly said, AHT can't do it alone, it is a joint effort with all of us. She had mentioned some opportunities that Gateway Communities have gotten from the state regarding reductions in interest rate loans, but that is not an option around here. So again, if she can't do it alone, she looks forward to working with the city council on further opportunities. The committee voted three to zero to recommend a reapproval of Ms. Cameron to the Affordable Housing Trust.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded. Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you want to do a roll call?
I think so for appointments. Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council Preston.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Z.
Yes.
Council Donahue.
Yes.
Council Grantis.
Yes.
Council Hammond.
Yes.
Council Khan.
Yes.
Council Lane.
Yes.
And Council Cameron.
Yes.
Thank you. So, motion to approve appointment 528, Jennifer Blanchet as our zoning administrator.
Second.
So Ms. Blanchet has been our zoning administrator since 2018. She's stated, everything is always interesting and every day is different. She'd already commented that she had two applicants come in for ADUs since we voted on it the first round, so we did something right. Council Preston did ask what's coming up next from the Planning Department. She mentioned that there is going to be a signage ordinance coming, and some other general housekeeping items, but as we know how much the community's growing, it's very nice to have Ms. Blanchet as our zoning administrator. The committee voted three to zero to approve her nomination.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Roll call, appointing 528, Jennifer Blanchet. Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council Preston.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Z.
Yes.
Council Donahue.
Yes.
Council Grantis.
Yes.
Council Hammond.
Yes.
Council Khan.
Yes.
Council Lane.
Yes.
And Council Cameron.
Yes.
Motion to receive and file communication 577. This is a communication received from the trustees of the Port Plaza. As we know, that development agreement has been signed and our zoning has been passed, so this is a receive and file effort. This is a three to zero from the committee to receive and file.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Voice vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Okay, thank you.
Next is, motion to receive and file communication 599, the Port Plaza Development Agreement.
Taken.
In this case, we did actually read into the record what the development agreement entailed at the request of the Ward Five Councilor. We did have a discussion with Director Port on the implications of having the 35-year term limit on the affordable units, to which the Director mentioned that we hopefully will have some more growth in our 40R district, and in 35 years, we'll have more opportunity, and at some point, we will not be able to expand this community any further. So at that point, we all agreed to receive and file communication 599, three to zero.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of receiving and filing, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
All right. Motion to collectively receive and file communications 600 and 601.
Second.
These are the leftover remnants of the Brown School emails from some of our constituents and the memo related to the prior Zeta Plans. I think we all agree that these are now all overcome by events, and agreed to receive and file both communications, three to zero.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor of receiving and filing, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Okay.
So that is it coming out of Planning and Development. I can't say that I can do jazz hands like Council Preston can with a running gamut, but we only have a few items left, which includes the Brown School efforts. So on our next meeting, on the fourth, we will be doing, working on ordinance 668, which is the disposition of the Brown School. That is a committee of the whole item, so that's next Tuesday night at 6 o'clock. And after that, we will have our joint meeting with the Planning Board on the overlay district zoning, and that will be February 19th, after our next meeting. So that's it for P and D.
Great, thank you.
Sorry, did you say 6 PM next to you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that would get us to Public Works and Safety.
Thank you, Council President. I'm, I'm going to do some cleanup work first, if you don't mind, before I come back to the ordinance. Motion to collectively approve order 661, 662, and 663.
Second.
Great, thank you. On 661, it's, it's a grant for $16,000 from the Clean Vessel Act, goes to the Harbor Master going forward. This, this is the pump, free pump-out service. We offer it to recreational boaters, 75% of this, this pays 75% of the budget, and 25% comes from our Harbor Master fund. The next one, 662, is a grant from Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. This is the result of the work that we do at our recycling center. We've cashed in so many materials that have gone along, that have been resold and recycled along the way. We actually get credits for that, as 13 points, and that translates into cash dollars, which would be $16,900. That money is proposed to be reallocated for starter kits to the composting, environment and composting is very vital for us making our trash volume objectives. And 663 is, it's an executive office of public safety and security grant. It is, it is the emergency medical dispatch. This pays 100% of our relationship with Cataldo for emergency dispatch services going forward. And all three of these was a vote of three to zero.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? All right, so motion...
I do have a quick question.
Council Lane, go ahead.
EMD grant, you said it goes to Cataldo and not back to our dispatchers and recent It is, it is the emergency medical dispatch. This pays 100% of our relationship with Cataldo for emergency dispatch services going forward. And all three of these was a vote of three to zero.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? All right, so motion.
I do have a quick question.
Counselor Lane, go ahead.
E M D. grant, you said it goes to Cataldo and not back to our dispatchers and recent fire?
Yeah, we contract dispatch, medical dispatching through Cataldo going forward. So yes, that pays for that relationship. That has nothing to do with our dispatchers.
So when somebody calls 911, it goes to Cataldo now?
No, it comes to us. And then if we dispatch for medical supply, medical treatment, it would go to Cataldo for a response.
Hmm, okay.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, so we'll vote to collectively approve those three orders, 661, 662, 663. Since it's all money, we'll do a roll call.
Okay, on approving those three. Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Zied.
Yes.
Counselor Dunne.
Yes.
Counselor Grantis.
Yes.
Counselor Harmon.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
And Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion to approve order 665, a grant acceptance for ADA improvements.
Second.
This is a, this is a competitive grant. We were very fortunate to get it. There's a lot of hard work that goes on there. This grant is for $60,000 to be able to pay for a consultant to update our, our transitional plans, as well as our baseline, our current buildings for accessibility going forward. This is the matching grant on this, which is, you'll see the paperwork for that has come in, is from the N C O D. for $20,000 going forward. They have already selected a vendor institute for human centers, and they have, they're working on a scope going forward, but that should be done in the next year or so going forward. This is an important update plan for our accessibility. We have a grant to do it. Both our Ward Two Counselor, as well as the representative from N C O D. spoke in favor of this going forward. It was a significant milestone for us to achieve this grant. We voted three to zero for approval of this.
Thank you. Any further discussion on order 665?
Okay, we'll do a roll call. Roll call on approving order 665. Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Zied.
Yes.
Counselor Dunne.
Yes.
Counselor Grantis.
Yes.
Counselor Harmon.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion to approve order 666.
Second.
This is a federal grant from the U.S. Department of Transportation, and it's made to, it's awarded to us to create a safety action plan to identify Newbury Port's specific traffic issues. We've used something similar to this on High Street, which ended up at Myrtle. In this particular case, what it is, it's a grant of $145,000. We have to match it with $38,000, which would be coming out of the DPS Traffic Safety Line item going forward. The idea being that we would, as part of this, we would do a study in terms of creating a toolbox for all of the things we could do from a traffic safety perspective. As it was suggested in speaking with the DPS Director, we could create a slideshow or catalog that could showcase to some of our residents when they come, what a speed bump looks like, what extended curbs look like, what traffic, you know, electronic traffic signs would look like in the community, et cetera, along the way. So that, that was part and parcel of identifying those tools that we could put in our toolkit. We're hoping, and the target of this, because the scope was pretty nebulous, that we can do that for the $30,000 or $40,000 going forward, and have about $100,000 to buy the things we need to fill the toolbox, which is the most important part of that. So as I said, this is a loosely written grant in, as to what we have, and if we can get $100,000 worth of tools out of this, it would be great. We're looking to do demonstration-like project. It was identified here to be done at Kent and Merrimack going forward. Again, it would be demonstration, but you can leave that, you can leave the materials up as long as you want. There may be bollards in the street to show how we narrow the road. There might be some additional painting. There might be some, some electronic signs. All of those things could help bring a little bit of safety to that, to that corner, and we could use it for other members of the community to go see in place and in motion going forward. Again, it's a little bit rolling the dice, but I think that we, we all know that we need traffic safety. And building a toolkit and setting a plan for that, and then getting tools as well, would be worthwhile. Again, we passed this, we recommended approval, three to zero on this.
Counselor Zied.
Thank you. The only thing I wanted to say was just, I wanted to say on the record that I don't think accepting the grant constitutes approval to any roadway changes anywhere. If they want to do a project, they should bring in the plans and get them approved, as they would be changing the public way, even if temporarily. That's all.
Counselor Grantis.
Thanks. Just real quickly, Kent and Merrimack Street intersection is in my ward. It is a problematic intersection. I know when I was, before I was running for council, the then, the then Ward Three Counselor and I had a discussion of this. So it is nice to see that something is potentially happening down there. And as a reminder, the toolkit does stay within the city and can be used in other parts of the city as well. So I'm excited to see some, some forward movement in this intersection. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Counselor Dunne.
Thank you. Couple things. So as, as someone that remembers the intersection of Kent and Merrimack well, since I was about six years old, it was long overdue for this type of treatment. That is for sure, and an understatement, to say the least. Also, as a member of Traffic Safety Advisory Committee these last three years, there's been so much conversation around the concept of having, you know, traffic calming and safety toolkit, and all the things that we would like to have in there. So this is actually quite significant, and I really want us to all keep our fingers crossed that we get it, because all the conversations we've been having in T S A C have revolved around what, what we could do if we had X, Y, Z things in our toolkit, and we don't. So if this could get us there, that would be quite paramount to improving the safety across the city on our streets. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll do a roll call on this order to accept.
666.
Grant. Lucky number 666.
Roll call. Roll call. Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Zied.
Yes.
Counselor Dunne.
Yes.
Counselor Grantis.
Yes.
Counselor Harmon.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Roll call, done.
Motion to approve order 667.
Second.
This is two to six Market Street easements. This is, this is a new development that has gone on, that's already in place. It's authorized a simultaneous grant and acceptance of reciprocal easements associated with the right-of-way and sidewalk improvements located at two to six market. The, in a nutshell, there's an overhang over the sidewalk, and there, it creates an easement requirement over the sidewalk itself, and it was part of the building plan and design, and what we've all approved, what we're asking to do is authorize the mayor to accept these easements going forward in perpetuity. This does not set a precedent for other buildings going forward. This is just for this building and for the areas along Market Street that overhang onto the sidewalk. We approve this, three to zero.
Second.
There was a second, all right.
There is now.
Thank you.
I seconded earlier.
Any further discussion?
One second over here. It's heard.
Okay, hearing none, roll call.
Roll call on approving order 667, Market Street easements. Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Zied.
Yes.
Counselor Dunne.
Yes.
Counselor Grantis.
Yes.
Counselor Harmon.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion to approve ordinance 194.
Second.
Thank you for this, and thank you for everyone's patience as we get to this. We did have, we did have this in committee meeting, and we talked about it. We had the sponsor come in, who gave us an overview of what she was trying to accomplish, wanted clarity for the new clerk, and wanted clarity in public, has not heard the compelling reason to change, and wanted to avoid polarization of the parking program going forward. Counselor Dunne and Counselor Grantis both spoke in favor of the program, of the proposal, actually giving examples of how they think the program runs smoothly, and do think that the timing is right for this, given that we want to hire a new city clerk, and may or may not have the position of parking clerk going forward. The Counsel President was there to offer his insights as well, and said that, in many ways, that the mayor didn't necessarily want to see a change, and could submit an A O. if parking were in operations, but I don't think that discussion will continue. The new Chief of Staff was there and offered his opinions as well. Counselor Clark Jones, as his role, didn't see some of the operational challenges that were identified by the administration. In a nutshell, what we were trying to get to in this, as part of this, is to get to the fact that we're trying to insert a section 1325 administration, which really comes down to belt and suspenders of things that are already inferred and discussed about in the parking program being run out of the clerk's office, which was to basically state that, that the parking clerk is a part of the clerk's office and would be appointed by the City Council. Thank you. That was a committee report. We had multiple, a very long discussion.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Preston, before you go, Attorney North is here, if we need to ask her questions. And I know she's written a couple of versions of memorandum, as clerk Jones also had opined upon it at the request of a counselor, so we can have them as resources here. And Counselor Preston.
Perfect, thank you. Yeah, so as sponsor, I just wanted to sort of take the opportunity to sort of outline the situation as I see it, and hopefully this will lead to some debate. This is last, but I don't think it is going to be least for the evening. So, so as the Chair mentioned, despite parking operating successfully out of the clerk's office overseen by the City Council for over 30 years, the Code of Ordinances actually does not clearly delineate the appointing authority for the parking clerk. As we are about to hire a new clerk, I wrote this ordinance really to gain clarity for us as a council, for the administration, but also for this clerk, the new clerk, as we're, again, about to hire that person. The mayor has been exploring options of taking over the appointing authority for not just the parking clerk, but the entirety of the employees in the clerk's office since at least July. In light of that, I wanted to be certain that the discussion and any potential changes is done in daylight with public input, as opposed to behind closed doors. So as I mentioned, the parking clerk has, parking as a whole has really operated out of the clerk's office, under the oversight of the council, for a very long time, and I personally see no need for that change to that situation. Having said that, I do think there's a really solid argument that there needs to be a clear path on how to handle disciplinary action and personnel issues within the, the parking clerks, the parking office parking clerk. I commit tonight to working with the council to establish a communication on a path forward for that, so that that can be submitted to our next council packet, so that that can then be submitted to committee, and we can collectively, as a group, generate a path forward for that. I've given a lot of thought to it. I've had conversations with different people about how that would look. I think rather than suggesting a path forward, it's better to consider a communication that is open, that can come to committee, and then we, as can all collectively, have that conversation on that path forward. I believe that a parking clerk appointed by and overseen by the council avoids the potential for politicization of the parking clerk role. Just last week, during our committee meeting, we did hear testimony from a counselor that the mayor has recently pressured the parking clerk to forgive for handicap parking violations for a downtown business. I think it is incumbent on us to ensure that parking cannot be used as a political tool. A parking clerk appointed by and overseen by the council also avoids a dual reporting structure for members of the council staff in the city clerk's office. There have been a lot of, a lot of legal opinions flying around in the last weeks regarding the appointing authority of the parking clerk. I hope to not have endless debate tonight, but as you mentioned, Attorney North is with us, as well as the clerk is here, and so hopefully we can have assistance from both of them to be able to drive that forward, should we want to have that conversation. However, I will say that in my opinion, the Code of Ordinances, the Charter, and the case law are very clear that the City Council can have appointing authority for the staff, for the parking staff, because there is sufficient balance and power due to the budgetary powers that the mayor has over the parking clerk and the parking staff. I've been asked, and I'll let go after this, but I've been asked what happens if this ordinance passes tonight, and what happens if it fails. If this ordinance fails, I think there's very clear legal basis for the fact that the mayor does not become the appointing authority for the parking clerk. The council maintains appointing, appointing authority for the clerk's staff because Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 90, Section 20A, has never been adopted by the City Council. If this passes and the mayor disapproves, the administration has every right, of course, to sue the City Council. I am deeply hopeful that they do not choose to do that, but they have every right to do that. However, I am confident that the mayor would not be successful in a law, in a case, if he were to bring a case against us, because there are at least three cases of law that support that the, the City Council can be the appointing authority for council. The mayor also has the ability to submit a reorganization order to create a parking department, along with all the necessary staffing, budget that that department would need to operate effectively, and the council could deliberate on that plan. So there are paths forward if this passes, and I obviously feel that that's the right move for all of us, but I'm very open to the debate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Khan.
Yeah, thank you, Counsel President. Thank you very much for that introduction. I, when I first saw this, was very, I would say, probably not agnostic, but I was kind of curious on, you know, what, what was some of the drivers? And I think we, and I appreciate the sponsor very kind of eloquently saying that we do have a city clerk search, and we're gonna hopefully have a candidate that we will select soon. And so part of this seems to clean up, in my opinion, maybe something that, over time, has been maybe not quite codified or addressed in an adequate manner for moving ahead. In turn, in terms of the, you know, anecdotal motivations, I'm not gonna get into that. I'm really gonna talk a little bit about, you know, what's best in the terms of where the problem is, and how we could try to address it in a way that's gonna be consistent to our general practice, and how we really want to own our bylaws and what we do for law. In terms of, I keep hearing the number 30 years, you know, parking has operated this way for 30 years. So I've been just talking to people who've been sitting in this city hall for many years, and past mayors, and got a little bit of context of a timeline. And I think it's really interesting to hear that it was actually during former mayor holidays time period that the paid parking program came to fruition. And before that, it was mainly abound enforcement. I think there was one person, and around, like handicap. It was really, was there violations for handicap violations or so. And then the other thing I think is also very interesting is when, when did the parking enforcement officers become part of the union? Because, and the reason I'm bringing all this up is I really wanna understand maybe what has been the status quo, or the way things have been operating, and what is it really that we want to make sure that our body is kind of clarifying in terms of steps to move ahead? And as we know, the city clerk and the city clerk's office is under the council's jurisdiction. Parking has really morphed into a bigger entity than what it was maybe originally set out for. And with the parking garage, that was also the impetus of when we also had the unionization of our parking enforcement officers. So we see that what this started off with was somewhat small, and I'm starting to get a little bit of a flashback of what we went through when we were looking at the formation of the Parks Department. So we know that there are opportunities here. So I appreciate, and I really am leaning in more towards the fact that if we are in the mode to, to try to fix maybe an area that has been maybe woefully inadequate in of what is in the realm of the council versus what's in the realm of the administration. And in that process, it made me realize I have more questions than answers. And I really am left here still wondering, is the formation, is the parking clerk consistent with how we looked at the parks director? Is it a body that is kind of morphed into an entity that has like a mini department focus? And, and so that is what I'm eager to the conversation of what folks here think. But in terms of my sentiment around the language we're adopting and have before us today, I would like to understand if this is really the best process that we want to go versus trying to wait and see how we could structure it. Let me rephrase. I'm not sounding coherent. The first one is, is this in our role? I guess that's what I want to understand. If we are saying that the parking clerk is a body that we could create, and maybe that's the question I have, and if we have Attorney North here, I could get a more straightforward answer. And if that's also, and so I would definitely like to get that answer. The second question that I have and that I'd like to make sure we understand is the ramifications of what it would mean if we put and look at where the clerk is defined, and actually it's not this chapter, and I think that's why I find it confusing, because Chapter 13 relates to traffic and roads, and I think some of the parking is there. But we also have the city clerk, where we talk about the roles and responsibilities, and the council could define the responsibilities of the city clerk. So I'm trying to find that connection of where does this body fit in, in one, defining the parking clerk, and two, then coming up with its appointment? And so I guess my question here is regarding the attorneys, if they could speak now, Attorney North, on really letting us know, how does this change from a list of responsibilities under the clerk's office versus the formation of actually a new position, which I know we don't do?
Okay, thank you, Counselor Khan. Attorney North, I promoted you to a panelist, which I think you accepted. Do you have any thoughts on what Counselor Khan just said, and maybe in general about your opinion on this that you gave us last week?
Sure. So if you, you saw on Friday, I issued a new opinion. I listened to a lot of the discussions that we've had. We were not able to confer the information that we had over the summer that Chapter 90, Section 20A had been adopted by the city council. So I could not rely on that at this point. So I went back and I went through the charter, which is the governing document that lays out the authority and responsibilities of the different branches of government in the city. And you all know the charter well and well, so I'm not going to go through all of that. But I lay out the key provisions and the key definitions and considerations that I was looking at in the first part of my memo. The last part, the question about who has the appointing authority. I understand, so first of all, I wanted to clear, absolutely the city council has the authority to appoint the city clerk. There's no question in my mind about that, and I haven't given any opinion to the contrary about that. With respect to the parking clerk, however, there is no specific language in the charter that describes the parking clerk. And the language in the charter with respect to the clerk talks about the additional staff, right? And what does additional staff mean? And so I really sort of tried to dig into the definitions in the charter and the language in the charter to try to figure out what additional staff means. And what I concluded at the end of the day is that the parking head isn't defined. City officer is defined, and I feel like the parking clerk is more like a city officer than just general staff within the city clerk's department. I think additional staff refers to staff that the city clerk needs to run the city clerk's office. And I think that the parking clerk is really a separate entity and a separate agency almost in the city. It's any multiple member body, department, division, or office in the city of new report, which I believe includes the parking office. So in my, at the end of the day, my conclusion was that falls within the power of the mayor to appoint city officers, department heads, et cetera, as opposed to falling in the powers of the council to appoint the city clerk, because I don't believe the parking clerk is additional staff within the office of the city clerk.
Okay, did that answer your particular question, Counselor Khan?
Thank you. I mean, it's an opinion, I think is what I'm understanding, so thank you.
Okay. Further council discussion. Counselor Preston.
Yeah, so a couple of things. I'll say it for maybe the 400th time. I'm not a lawyer and I don't want to be. But, you know, I think it's a liberal opinion to state that, you know, first of all, we don't have a parking office. I think that has been fairly well established, that no parking office exists. And to consider the parking clerk a parking officer seems like a bit of a stretch to me. But I think where, no matter what, what I would rely on here is under Charter Section 3.3, where it discusses the mayor's appointment powers, there is a particular and very clear exception to the mayor's appointment power, which reads, quote, "accepting on persons," plural, "serving under the school committee," and persons, plural, "serving under the city council." And, you know, I think it's very clear to me that the clerk is serving under the city council. I think even Attorney North has said that she is not debating that in particular. And the charter is very clear that the mayor does not have appointment power on staff, not the clerk, but staff persons in the clerk's office that report to the city council. So help me understand how you would justify appointment power to the mayor, from the mayor to the parking clerk?
Well, first of all, I don't disagree that there's a carve-out in the mayor's authority. And again, person serving under the city council is defined in 2-8 of the charter, which refers to the city clerk's additional staff. And as I said earlier, I don't believe additional staff includes the parking officer, the parking office, the parking clerk, the parking officer, or whatever you want to name that person. It is a person who has supervision over staff, correct? I mean, I think that they have, there's a parking staff that reports to the parking clerk. So, you know, I think that they are a person having charge of an office or an apartment of the city, and I think that the parking clerk's office is an office of the city.
Counselor Preston, Counselor Donahue, Counselor McCauley.
Yeah, I mean, I would just say that I don't feel that the parking office has been established by the city. I have yet to see any evidence of that. So I, again, I struggle to understand how we can define a parking, sorry, a parking office in particular. But I will also note that Section 2-8 of the charter says that the city clerk, or sorry, the city council may employ such additional staff as it deems necessary. So there again, we have this additional staff verbiage, and I just don't understand what the legal basis is for your definition of additional staff. Not just your opinion, but your legal opinion as to the definition of additional staff.
My legal opinion is based on the language of the charter, the definitions of the charter, and how you read the charter based on the language of the charter itself.
I will have to agree to disagree.
Counselor.
Yield to others.
I understand that.
Counselor Donahue, or do you want to hold on for a second?
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. I just kind of choked. I'm good.
Choking aloud here.
Yeah, so I'm a little troubled. Okay, so to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, when you say state officer, I mean, none of our parking clerks are deputized. I'm not sure whether the term officer is coming in. It's more like you're arguing the semantics of a title, to me, is what it sounds like. And I don't know that that's going to hold water. To me, the council owns the roads, so that is why we would require additional staff to monitor the parking spots on upset roads. So yes, it started out to monitor, you know, predominantly the handicap accessible spots. There's a lot about the parking infractions that occur. So being that the city council owns the roads, and we have purview over the city clerk, it doesn't seem like a stretch that in a sort of non-solidified department that doesn't have an actual, its own department, that you could define it by having an officer that leads it, if it doesn't have its own department, and if it's working out of another. So my only real question to Attorney North is who are you working for? Which side are you working for? Like, because I'm not hearing any support of what the council's trying to do.
I work for the city, and I give my legal opinion without respect to you asking the question.
I beg to differ. I yield for now.
Counselor McCauley.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
She's finished.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel President. Yeah, the parking program, and it's a program, right? It grew out of the city clerk's office, and it grew small, and it got bigger, and here's where we are. I don't necessarily agree with the speculative opinions that we've heard, that the office could be an officer, it could be a department, it could be that. It's not. It's a program that is run out of the clerk's office traditionally going forward. There are cases cited, adjudicated by the SJC in Massachusetts that have touched just upon this issue, which is the expansion of executive department, tried to expand executive power going forward, and they've thwarted that in the three cases that are stated going forward. And again, I'm not trying to argue what that is. But this debate kind of opens up the conversation that we're trying to get to, which is the needed clarity going forward, right? So we can infer based upon different paragraphs and readings and interpretations of what goes on in the charter itself, but this, from an administration standpoint, makes it pretty clear that just says the parking clerk is part of the city clerk's office, and the authority will be by the city council. That's all it says. There's nothing more to it than that. Can there be a future administrative order by the administration if they so choose to do that? Maybe, but they'd have to negotiate with the council in terms of that. In terms of doing a straight reorganization like the parks was done, the first thing, we've created some, we've created some committees and boards here, public art being just the latest of what we created. And you have to create a department. You have to create, you have to empower them with certain skill sets going forward. And the parking department was never created. It's a parking program that has grown out of the clerk's office, right? And so I do support this language. I think it's important for us to have clarity on this as we go into tomorrow's meeting, because frankly, if we don't get clarity on this, I'm not sure why we have a meeting tomorrow, because we have to tell candidates, well, I'm still not sure what your full role is, right? Is it going to be 80% of what we think it's going to be or whatnot? And so that, that's not a deadline. It's just, we're trying to all work on good faith here and get it going at the same time to try to move this forward. So that's my two cents. I yield. I'm appreciating the conversation, but I don't, I'm not appreciating trying to debate with a lawyer, because we're just, I think we're here for questions and answers and direction and so forth.
Counselor Shan, and Counselor Lane.
Thank you, Counsel President. I did just want to bring up tomorrow night, because we were very forthright with all the applicants that we interviewed for the position that we have two coming tomorrow night, that we did not give them guarantees on having the parking position. So if you're thinking that this has to go through tonight so that we have definition for tomorrow night, then that's not, that was not a promise made during any of the interviews. So just food for thought there.
Counsel Lane.
I guess to dovetail on both last statements, I think it's embarrassing, actually, that we've come this far in the process for a clerk, and we don't even know what the position entails. I don't think that if there's no org chart, that tells me there's no parking department. It seems like there was some missed things over time with previous administrations, and now we're going to have to settle them. So, I mean, I'm sure there's a pathway forward here. I just, again, I don't know why, why there's so much gray area around this. It seems pretty cut and dry. It's been done, it's out of the clerk's office for this long. I don't see what the disruption is now that there's, you know, that the clerk is retiring, and we're going to hire a new one. All of a sudden, there's a grab for who's got control of what, but there's really no control anywhere that's been written down over time. It's just kind of embarrassing, to be frank. And I don't know why we're going to meet with candidates at all until we figure out what the role entails completely, so they know what they're signing up for. If I'm a candidate and you tell me, oh, you might have to do this, but maybe not, and they're watching. I mean, they're seeing what's going on here. So why are we, why are we putting it out there to somebody for a job that they don't even know? We don't, we're not really sure what your, what your responsibilities are, because we never had a chance to write it down in the past. I wouldn't want to work for somebody like that. I'd be like, you don't know what you're doing. So I guess that's my two cents. I think that this needs to move forward. We need to figure out which, which direction we're going with the parking clerk or officer, or whichever way you want to say it. I'm in favor of this. I'm voting yes for it. I won't rush it through, but I also think that we should probably put on the back burner any further conversations with candidates until we figure out what we're doing. So that's my two cents.
Further comments? Counsel Z.
Thank you. I'll take a crack at it here. So first thing is, I just want to separate two things. One is, there seemed to creep into this discussion and debate the notion about the clerk's staff reporting to the mayor. And I just want to say that, at least for myself going on record, that any notion to that effect would be met with great force from me. That's an unacceptable non-starter, non-conversation. I understand the parking clerk, the debate, and it's quite a bit of legalese to get lost in. I take a very simplistic view that, you know, there's a specific chapter and section in Chapter 9020A that you're supposed to accept that then defines this mayor council approval, which is frankly customary for many appointments. But it's interesting that there's a specific section to that purpose. And the point I'm trying to make is if you don't accept the local option, then I think what essentially you're saying is you default back to your local stuff, and that's where you get into this debate about what does the charter say? What does the history and precedent say? What do some of the cases say? I think there, you know, frankly, on both sides, there are sensible arguments about this, but probably the one that's the hardest is the precedence. You know, when you have something that exists for a long time, that typically ends up becoming rote. It becomes the standard, and you follow that. So to me, I think where this goes in the future is anybody's guess, but I think an administrative order, if there's really a desire to change things, is the way to maybe unwind some of the things that were done, which is the ad hoc nature of the formation of this parking program, parking department, whatever you want to call it. Unfortunately, at the time, it was not formed correctly, in my opinion. You know, this does not necessarily mean it was ill-intentioned. Some things are just organic. You know, you start off with a thing, and then all of a sudden, the thing is three exercise it was, and, you know, you roll with it. And actually, I think we should sort of be happy that it's actually not, not a disaster, that we did it ad hoc, and sometimes that's the benefit of growing slowly. So I want to put that aside now, because that isn't really the problem. The problem we have now is we are at a point of inflection with the hiring, and with respect, I don't think we can nor should cancel tomorrow. Why? Because we've been moving a process, and, you know, these are, this is a human process. So you can't just, we can't just stop and say, we'll get back to you in 60 to 90 days when we figure out our head from our tail. So I'm going to try my best to address really the problems that I see before us today, which is, number one, we need clarity on who's going to do the appointing, and that is going to require us to stand on our hind legs and make a decision tonight. It's just, I mean, listen, we can ask the city solicitor ad nauseam, she will understandably get frustrated with us. We can argue with each other about the law, and we will understandably get frustrated with each other, because until you go to a court, you, this is, this is just fun. It's an academic exercise to argue in both directions. It's an academic exercise to argue in both directions. So, to that end, I suggest that we move forward with the language as it is in terms of the appointment because I think it's a fool's errand to try and resolve and make anybody feel anything differently about the law tonight. And I think based on the comments I've heard, there's general, at least assent, I wouldn't say consent, but assent, understanding or appreciation. But it doesn't mean there are not, there are not problems around the disciplinary. And so, I understand the idea of like, let's do a communication in two weeks and hash this out. Again, it doesn't, it doesn't move us forward. So, I would offer, you know, the motion to amend the following. So, you add two things. One is, first paragraph would be, on a quarterly basis, the parking clerk shall report to the council on the number of citations issued, number appealed, number of appeals approved and denied, and a summary of any complaints received. So, this is a reporting mechanism. I look at it as a transparency thing. I hope it's not controversial. The clerk, the current parking clerk already reports a monthly financial numbers and frankly, I've never asked for anything and not received it. So, I suspect if you go and ask for it, you would get it. But let's just make it something that at least gets sunshine and everybody can see it, especially around the appeals and the denials, and everybody can see it. The second paragraph, and this is one amendment because I'm just going to take one shot at it. If it doesn't work, it's okay. The mayor may transmit a complaint to the city council president at any time regarding the actions or operations of the parking clerk. Upon receipt, the city council president shall have seven days to transmit said complaint to the city council, which shall in turn have 60 days to issue a response in writing. Such complaint and response may be kept confidential and dealt with in executive session to the extent allowed by law. And I think, if you really think about it, if there are issues around discipline, it provides a process. It does not provide a guaranteed outcome. It does not promise anybody that the complaint will be adjudicated the way that they want, but it also does not break sort of a very fundamental line, which is the line between the city clerk. And yes, we're trying to split hairs by saying there's city clerk, but they also have the parking clerk. That's a very, I wrote, I tried. I wrote like several pages about this two weeks ago. I could not come to a good compromise on how you could split that because inevitably you feel that if the clerk is partially responsible to somebody else, they always have that hanging over their head. And if the council say we're to be doing something the mayor didn't approve of, pulling their salary or disciplining them through the side door is not going to make anything good. So, I think these are good faith efforts to both sides to provide a process and also frankly, take some pressure off the city council president from having to deal with such a matter by themselves, which is really hard, and democratizes it and makes it more transparent. So, those are my motions. I'm happy to make the printout available to the clerk, but if somebody would second, I'd be grateful. Thank you.
Okay. So, we have, we're discussing the amendment.
Or is it a friendly amendment?
Yeah.
So, amusingly, we're, we're pretty fairly aligned here for having not discussed about it. I, I actually have a certain, well, let's say this. I put amendment language together about specifically the piece around the metrics and the data on tickets, which I'm happy to share. We could discuss if it's close to yours or not. I did not capture what you captured on the second piece, which is the, the mayor's ability to, you know, essentially bring forth complaints to the council president. I'm certainly open to both amendments, but I do at least have on paper an amendment around, around metrics. If, if you want me to pass that around, I, I can't guarantee it's the same words, but it might at least be close enough if you could send one to the clerk as well and one back to the council president.
Let me take it as friendly if it's close.
Yes, so this is going to be more associated to the metrics piece. Here, let me give you and do one and then thank you very much. We could pass it on that side of the room. But I do, you know, I debated whether or not to just sort of bring this forth as an amendment with myself and I sort of landed in a place of, oh, sorry, perhaps that is better taken up in the discussion that I mentioned around the communication of having the, the communication come forward and then have us as, as a body debate and deliberate in a committee about how we want to tackle personnel and disciplinary issues moving forward. And I, again, I debated whether or not it was better to just sort of bring this amendment forward tonight, but, or if it was better to, to hold off on that. But if it is the will of the council to, to bring this into the ordinance to ensure that there is, at the very least, the, the ability to track complaints and, you know, numbers of tickets that are issued, how many are appealed, how many are waived, how many, how many complaints are, are coming forward as it relates to the parking program as a whole. But I, I also have no problem with the further amendment around, you know, the mayor being able to play a piece in complaints as well.
Okay. Counsel Conn?
So, thank you. And, and I do want, I mean, we do get the paid parking revenue and expenses and we do get a report quarterly. I do want to point people to that. And I think some of this is in it, tickets. I, I see at least in what I have here, there are some of this. So, I just wanted to check with the clerk.
Yeah, it's a monthly report that goes to Commission on Disability. There's also a monthly income and expense report that's pretty detailed.
Yeah, it's very detailed. I have it open right now. So, so let me, let me maybe rephrase where I'm just a little hesitant here. This seems very reactionary and mainly because of the fact that, you know, we're hearing anecdotally the intention of the administration. I think we, I heard that earlier in the introduction, that there seems to be on the mayor's effort, some kind of intervention and we're now trying to get ahead of that. But I caution us in, in kind of rushing this through in a reactionary method because a few things comes to mind is I, I feel like we've been doing, we've been doing business as usual. I mean, the parking, the parking effort has been running under the clerk's office and if I look at budget documents, and that's why when I said 2013, it says in the clerk's office, the paid parking program started. And you look at the FTE of that time, you're shaking your head, but I have it open right here.
I'm going to let you speak. Sorry, I shouldn't be shaking my head. It was way before that.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Well, it says, I'm looking at the, the paid parking program was implemented and I, and I have it right here because the FTE in 2013 was 3.5 individuals and now we're at 8.2.
Oh, it's grown.
And so, yes, it's grown a lot. And yeah, 2013, that's 12 years. But my, my point is, even in the org chart at the time, parking didn't have its own element. So, over time, and my only point for bringing this up is, this has grown. And in my seat here, in the last six, seven years, counselors here, and not some of the folks here, but other counselors have challenged in terms of, you know, how is the clerk's functions running while knowing that there's this entity that is, is very demanding and it has a lot of effort? And how is that being managed appropriately? Are things being done? And we know that's a challenge and we appreciate the hard work of the staff because it's been, in my mind, very successful, which is what we're seeing here. It's thriving. You look at these reports, you see with that revenue, what, what we're bringing in, the, the growth of the program is fantastic. I think what I want to make sure in terms of moving forward, that we take time to, I know we talked budget before and that's all in our mind. Budget is in my mind here as well. And what I mean by that is, we've let this entity that started small stay where it is and, and just assume that that's the place for it. When are there opportunities for a financial model that could say, where is the most, most beneficial place that could maybe have a financial benefit to the city? Are we using our resources effectively? And I don't want to miss that. I feel like this is a quick fix to keep the steady state. But I challenge us to allow a process to explore other ways. And to me, I'm, I'm not talking about power grab because I think every, every place you might have someone that, or there might be an opportunity where the optics could be, oh, well, one can abuse, one could say waive this water and sewer bill, property taxes, anywhere. We've been parking as an example. It's, it's all out there. So, why should that dictate making good policies and looking at things in a, in a more, kind of, I guess, an umbrella approach? So, that, that's why I feel like this seems like a very, to fix an issue because we have this timeline. So, maybe what I would ask, because I think some good ideas were brought up from the sponsor in terms of, you know, the communication, the opportunity for administration to weigh in on a reorganization, although the mayor's comments made it very clear they don't want to reorganize, which I find very confusing because that, to me, would be maybe something that would be to consider. So, in the meantime, I, I just have one question. If I may ask the, the city clerk this question is, we're rushing this because we want to get the swearing in of a parking clerk, right? Or I think, when was, in looking at what we have right now, the city clerk gets elected and, and they are not sworn, I mean, they're elected and then sworn in.
Pointed.
Well, well, elected. I, I went to the charter. So, the cities, the city clerk is elected for three years is what the charter says. Yeah, it does.
I just never remember running.
That is a bigger problem.
And I think when the, meaning elected from, elected from the council by a majority vote of the council. That's what they mean.
I know what you mean.
Yes. And so, when I look at who's being sworn in, I see assistant city clerk. And so, I don't see anything with the parking clerk, which is what we're trying to solve here. But traditionally, when I look at the org chart, it says parking enforcement office manager. Is that, is that yourself or who's the parking enforcement office manager in the org chart as one FTE?
Well, as you mentioned, what org chart? I mean, the way it works is that I have a supervisor, parking supervisor, happens to be here tonight. And the chain of command is, starts with the parking clerk, which is also the city clerk, then it goes to a parking supervisor and then out to the officers. But that's probably oversimplifying it because we have a pretty robust system inside the clerk's office too, that everyone in the clerk's office works on.
So, my, my argument, or not argument, the point I'm making is, I want to look at the current budget book and the org chart. It doesn't say city clerk slash parking clerk. Instead, my F, the FTEs, which is what I'm saying, 8.2, says city clerk and assistant, assistant city clerk, admin one, admin two, and then parking enforcement office manager is one FTE. And then we have the parking enforcement officers who are in the union. And so, to me, this has become, like, I'm just giving this as an example of the growth. And if the council is the one who the parking is reporting to, I've not seen that. That has not, all I, I do get and I appreciate the parking report on, on the tickets and the revenue. That's been a key part, especially with the garage. So, that aspect I understand. We've been kind of curious and wanting to see that. We set the parking rates. But in terms of the parking enforcement officers reporting to us or us having authority like we do with you, it's been just an area of vagueness. And I think what we're trying to do is fix that in some way, but I don't think this is fixing all that ambiguity that's still there. And so, I just want to point that out.
Can I just, a point of order? Can I see this chart, this org chart that you're referring to?
Yeah.
Please, I'd love to see it.
Yeah.
You're referring to the beginning pages of the annual budget.
Yeah.
No, no, I want to see the, the chart.
Do you want to share it?
Where, where am I finding this?
The budget book.
Yeah, the budget book. I mean, I don't know how to make it bigger, but it's the, it's what we approved in the budget. That, that's what I'm trying to share.
But is there an org chart?
Yeah, there's an org chart on the next page here. So, here's the org chart.
Budget documents.
But that's, that's an org chart made by finance for budget purposes.
It's a budgetary.
I'm looking if it's not a $25.
I want the, I want the admin, the administrated, the administration's org chart.
This is the.
We have a work chart for every, every department that comes through. Okay, there you go.
Yeah.
So, who's at the top?
City clerk.
Okay. And who does the city clerk refer, report to?
City council.
Okay.
Okay. Counsel Zede?
Thank you.
Can you still pull that up for me? I'm sorry. I want to see this first.
So, what page is it on?
It is on page 38.
Wonder if it's Chrome.
It's hyperlink, so if you click on city clerk's office, it'll jump there.
I'm in Chrome, which I'm not familiar with and.
Welcome.
Almost. There we go. Yeah, can you scroll down a little bit?
There it is.
Yeah, I can see it because I just want to see the top. It says something before. Organizational overview. Is there, is there a? Yeah. Additionally, the city clerk manages the parking system and its officers.
Okay. And you could look it up on your, on your laptop. Counsel Zede?
Nonsense.
So, I just want to come back to the amendment. I'm happy to swap out my first paragraph for what the counselor's presented with just one change. Instead of to the city council president or to the council president, it should be to the city council. By way of the president is fine, but it should come to everybody and I think it should be in the packet and everybody can see it and see that there were 100 appeals and 70 were approved. So, 70% is, you know, again, I, I agree that a lot of this is already existing in different places, but let's just bring it in. That's my first thing. So, I'd all accept as friendly. I don't know who the second was on the amendment. Was it you? Who is the second?
McCullough.
Okay, so if that's all right with my second. But I still maintain the second paragraph, which I'm happy to read back in now that we've gotten a little further away from it. But the only other two things I want to say are, one is, yes, I mean, the city clerk does report to the, to the city council by, you know, by way of the president. That is, so there is a route there. That is how that works and we're trying not to break that sanctity by bringing in the executive branch into that equation. The final thing I want to say is, I really want to acknowledge what the at-large counselor said. I don't, I personally don't foreclose on anything being true in the future. If you actually were to get me and, and talk about parking, I've become more convinced in the last month or so that, that at some point, parking probably should leave the clerk's office because I'm greedy and I want to reclaim that time for the city council. But that's a debate that we need to have another day. We are forced by circumstance here. When we get together and we elect, and it, and that's the term used in the charter, okay, we elect a city clerk, the next step is that we're going to give them a contract and, you know, the part of the work of the committee was we pulled a copy of that contract. Of course, right in the contract, it says, here's your three big things and number three is parking. And then there's an associated salary that goes into that contract. So, unfortunately, the amount of time we have, it, 60 days isn't going to help us. You know, 90 days isn't going to help us. We probably need a year, like for a five dash one, and that doesn't account for the time it will take to assemble a five dash one, which could be a year by itself. So, I just want to say that the points are very well taken. I too hate being reactionary, but we need to do this something and we, you know, we can try and keep the city clerk with us for hours. He may not appreciate that over a period of time, but right now, the stable option is to keep it. And this order does not specifically preclude, in the language itself, in this ordinance, I should say, sorry, to be clear, it doesn't say the city clerk shall always be. It just says the city council is the appointing body. And so, if the mayor came in and said, here's a five dash one, I want to appoint somebody to be parking clerk, the council can say yes. And frankly, in the end, you start to get circular because we'd have to approve a five dash one anyways. You have the budget. So, all of these things eventually just come to the same place, which is all of us working together. So, I still encourage passing the ordinance because it just defines an appointing authority and we can finally dispense with that question because we'll have clear language. I think the amendments tackle some of the other pressing issues, which are, we want to see, everybody wants to see, and then if there's a problem, we don't want, we need a way to deal with that. That's fair and we don't need to put a pile of bricks on top of the president to be the sole one to have to just, to handle that disciplinary action. It should be, it's all of our weight to bear together. So, on the amendment, I accept this, but I want council, city council instead of council president. I maintain the second paragraph. It's, my second is okay with it, so I'm hoping we could vote on the amendment, see if that goes.
Any further discussion on the amendment?
You're looking, I'm going to have a question, but I don't, no, that's true.
Sure.
So, I just wanted to be careful about the complaint language because over the last couple of years, for whatever reason, the complaints have not come from HR to me. They've kind of gone over my head to the president, which is not proper and doesn't, shouldn't happen that way. It's not a lot of issues, but I wouldn't want to encourage that path. They've kind of gone over my head to the president, which is not proper. It doesn't, shouldn't happen that way. It's not a lot of issues, but I wouldn't want to encourage that path. I think if the parking clerk, city clerk, whomever it may be, is doing something they shouldn't do, then certainly HR should go to the president. But failing that, HR could come and should come to the parking supervisor. That's the way it should work, that path. I think almost everybody would agree with me on that. So I don't know what you're, if you can insert a clause there. Or you're just saying all complaints from the administration go right to the president of council? Just seems a little. Maybe there won't be many.
Let me just ask, yes, I think this is, my intent is this is meant for serious and severe. This is not meant to be invoked constantly. This is not a daily or weekly occurrence. Just my intent, but of course, the language is what it states, so we need to make sure it's clear. You mentioned the term parking supervisor. Did you mean parking clerk or parking supervisor?
No, there's this parking supervisor.
Because to the council's point, these are two different people. You have a parking supervisor and you have a parking clerk. So these are different entities. I guess my thought process was that if there's an issue, you go to the supervisor of the position you're taking exception with. And so if you're taking exception with the parking clerk or the city clerk, the supervisor is the city council by way of the president.
I guess what I'm trying to avoid is the common situation where someone comes in and complains that two cars on their street have been parking the wrong way for two days. And we would say, and typically do say, we will send an officer over. Well, failing that, some people still go right into the administration. And I just wouldn't want something as small and daily as that to be coming. But, you know, I'm not married to it. I understand where you're coming from and I fully appreciate it.
I would hope that this would be used in the intent. If you want to transmit a letter to the city council about every parking complaint that comes in, I think you're going to wear out your welcome pretty quickly with the city council. I mean, bluntly, this is self-regulating. You need to use it when there are systemic or endemic complaints that you want to bring forth with document. I don't have a problem adding the word transmit complaints, you know, systemic complaints or something like that. Or material complaints maybe is a good, is always a popular word. But my intent was this was to be for, you know, for serious things, not a resident wanted to complain this way and then go around. So material, I have the word. So may I read the whole thing?
Yes.
The mayor may transmit a material complaint to the city council president at any time. Upon receipt, the city council president shall have seven days to transmit said complaint to the city council, which shall in turn have 60 days to issue response in writing. Such complaint and response may be kept confidential and dealt with in executive session to the extent allowed by law. So we'll insert the word material. Is that okay? Yes. Second, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion on the amendment? Council Khan.
I hope this is related to the amendment, but may I just get, I'm wondering if we could move the whole thing. So section 2-8. So I'm not happy with this in section 13. I think if you look at section 2-8, it says appointments of the city council. And I think we're trying to make this one of the appointments. Is that correct? So if that is correct, section 2-8 is where appointments should lie, just to be completely clear. I just want to make sure we're doing our bylaws correctly.
I think we should just restrict our comments to the amendment and then hold that thought. Any more discussion on the amendment? All right. Going to do a voice vote on amendments?
Sure.
I just read that in our rules anyway. All right, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no.
One no.
I think two, council president, were you no?
I was yes on the amendment.
Oh, you were yes, okay.
Okay, so Counselor Khan, your point about the placement?
Yeah, I think for clarity, because I see section 2-8 is titled appointments of the city council. So I would suggest for ease of finding that that would go in that section.
Counselor Zied.
Unless I'm reading it wrong, which is entirely possible at this hour, I think article is part of the charter. So we can't, right, we can't, and so we would love to, but, you know, we could do a home rule and all that jazz, but.
Thank you. So my question then, if the charter has appointment, and I guess this is my problem with the whole thing. So it's under legislative branch. It's what we were referencing. We're now adding in our power additional appointments, and I do have a problem with that. Thank you.
Counselor Preston and then Solicitor North has her hand raised.
Thank you. So I just want to react to a couple of things that were said earlier and then sort of lend my voice to some things that were also said. So firstly, I want to be very clear that this ordinance was not written in a reactionary manner to the administration at all. I actually was not made aware of the fact that the administration was, had requested an opinion way back in July of last year around the appointing power for the mayor of not only the parking clerk, but the entirety of the clerk's office. I only became aware of that last Monday. So and the ordinance had already, or yeah, it was last Monday. So the ordinance had already been accepted to the council at the previous, the meeting the previous Monday before. And, you know, I do think it is worth noting that Attorney North, to the comments that were made earlier, wrote this opinion way back in July of 2024 and never brought this to the council. So, you know, I was not made aware of it. And I actually found out from the mayor that he had this opinion on hand and then requested it and then realized that it had been written way back in July. So, you know, it does bear, you know, sort of to the at-large, or sorry, to the Ward Two counselors' point earlier about, you know, is information being shared freely. But the other thing that I really wanted to say about this is, you know, in terms of, you know, how do we handle this? I mean, certainly moving forward, the administration is completely free to explore options for reorganization and creation of a department or maybe moving it to a different place, all those sorts of things. But I, this, that will take a great deal of time. There will need to be a lot of metrics to support that argument. There will have to be a lot of understanding of, you know, how to structure it, you know, how many heads it would take, how much budget it would take, all of those things. That is not something that can be done overnight. And in the absence of clarity, we have then hired a clerk without it still being clear whether or not the clerk is the parking clerk. So at the very least, I think the most prudent path forward would be to approve this. Make it clear that the clerk, and to be clear, if you read my ordinance, it does not say that the city clerk has to be the parking clerk. It says that the parking clerk has to be in the clerk's office. And, you know, it at least gives us that clarity, that that would be under the purview of the new city clerk, whoever that may be. Then it gives, you know, clarity and structure. And then the administration has the opportunity to create a different path forward if they would like to do that. It, the mayor's update suggests they don't, but, you know, perhaps that would be rethought. Then that could come to council. We could deliberate that, discuss it, and find a path forward. But I don't think, you know, nature abhors a vacuum, right? And I think you end up with chaos if you don't have any sort of clarity with someone new in place. Thank you.
Further comments? Okay, roll call on ordinance.
194.
194.
As amended.
As amended.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. President, Mr.?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Have my hand raised?
Yep, Karis, sorry I even mentioned that and then I forgot. Go ahead.
Yeah. I just want to address two things. One, there are things that the city councilor has asked me to do that I keep confidential. There are things that the mayor has asked me to do that I keep confidential. It does not mean that I am not the lawyer for the city, and I just want to underscore that. Secondly, to Counselor Khan's point, the way to get absolute clarity and to make this crystal clear is to amend the charter and put the appointment authority into that shape. That would absolutely lock it down. It would be crystal clear at that point.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all I want to say. Thank you.
I just, can I, one very brief comment, I promise.
Go ahead.
Just to be very clear for those who may not understand, the charter is only updated on the decade basis. So updating the charter is certainly not going to happen today or tomorrow unless, unless, you know, there's either a referendum to do so or, so to be clear, and I don't disagree.
It's 2019, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, 2029.
2029 would be the next time that it would be discussed. So it would be a very long time if we wanted to update the charter. Thank you.
Okay, roll call on the.
Roll call on ordinance 194, approved as amended. Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
No.
Counselor Zee.
Yes.
Counselor Dunhu.
Yes.
Counselor Grannis.
Yes.
Counselor Khan, I'm sorry, Counselor Hanan, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
No.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
No.
No. Three noes, needing six, as far as I know. Ordinance passes first reading.
Okay.
I have no further items tonight. Thank you very much.
We are going to go into executive session. And before we get to that, is there anything for good of the order? Counselor McCauley?
Yeah, I just want to mention two things for the good of the order going forward is that there will be an upcoming public meeting, conversation, dialogue on fluoride in our water, either removing it or keeping it going forward. The Board of Health has done some extensive research on that, and it's time to engage the public going forward. And this will be kind of an all-hands-on kind of type of meeting. It's being run by the administration, but we should be all supportive of that. And secondly, as we've mentioned, there's a building report coming out by, building report that is due to us. It's due the last day of February. I just want to have the reminder of that, that that's what we're expecting. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Zied.
Also quickly, one is, I'm really hoping to have a, I know I've been discussing with the president, but just to share, to have a chair conversation about the schedule. My hope is we can work together to de-conflict big efforts. So I really hope you like the technicolor schedule. Second thing is, I was, in the context of the committee title page in the packet, I was hoping that we could work with the clerk's office to investigate, could that become the minutes of the committee meetings? So I'm just throwing out this question. In the packet, putting in the cover page something, and then it gets voted on because the committee is here. And so anyways, just want to explore that. And then last thing is just on the public comment, just to keep asking if the hands can be raised by a certain point because you can't use hands to respond to another public comment. It's just, thank you, thank you.
Counselor Khan, and then I'm going to add one thing.
Okay, thank you, Council President. Very quickly to just publicly hear, Council President, it would be great to get an update on the investigation. And I know we haven't heard anything, but I think many of us have, are wondering when that will happen. So maybe by our next meeting or something. Thank you.
Absolutely. Yes, thank you. And we will, I'll be talking to each of you about trying to schedule a couple-hour planning session sometime in the next month or so. I know we've got a lot of committee flux and lots of things going already, but just a separate session. And I'll be in touch about your ideas about that and particularly around the scheduling. So we can try to map out whatever degree that we can. Counselor Donahue?
Thank you. So this might be our last meeting with Clerk Jones as our clerk. And I just wanted to stand up. You know, I mean, I mean. God willing, right? As far as it might, right? I mean, you know.
Thank you.
Ideally, tonight will be his last serving, us in his capacity. I just want to say thank you personally. Clerk Jones has been there from day one with all of my needs. All of my reasonable accommodations have been met by the clerk's office, really more than I could have asked for. And every time that we have a meeting, he takes the time to go through the packet with me and read through it so that I understand what we're coming into. Everyone else has the ability to open that packet up when it gets sent and just cruise through it. I do not. And the clerk has just really been above and beyond in helping me along the way. So I just really can't thank him enough from the bottom of my heart, and I'm going to miss him terribly, so thank you.
Thank you.
I think this is, I think we got three weeks.
Thank you. We, remember that Rich Jones guy?
Soon to be.
You remember when I was emceeing some state of the city or something? I said, would you please rise and sat. That's what I just felt like with my office. It was just so sweet to see JT get up.
So I am going to entertain a motion for us to go into executive session. We will need a separate executive session link if we, I'm also asking to waive the rules to our city solicitor. We also waived rule 27 so she can participate remotely. And so I'd entertain a motion for us to go into executive session under section 21A1 to discuss reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints of charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. And this relates to open meeting law complaint brought against the city council. We would not be coming back into open session. So those of you watching or being here, we're not going to come back into open session. And also, if we combine that with waiving the rules 27, doesn't say if that's counsel, remote participation, or others, but I think we should probably do that. And then we'll, we'll get off this Zoom and we'll find Karis on another Zoom.
Mr. President, so is that a combined, you're going to waive the rules to allow remote?
That's allowable, yes.
I don't see why it couldn't be.
So move.
Second.
Okay, and we'll do a roll call to come out of that. Counselor Zied.
Yeah, I just want to state that I'll be opposing this motion. I just, we should, we can just talk about this in public session. The agenda states exactly what it is. We've received an open meeting law complaint. There are some charges being made, and I'm comfortable at this stage in the game discussing them publicly. That's my personal feeling. We have to respond to them, so this isn't a question of whether we will address them or not. It's just the manner in which we do so.
And I would just say, I, we did have a brief conversation about this. I think with a little bit more leeway, I would have been amenable to that because, for a variety of reasons. But I think since we did post it as executive session, I think it's not possible to kind of change because we did notice it, but I'm not, I'm not an attorney. But so anyway, so I'd ask for people's vote in the affirmative.
Okay, I yield.
Okay, roll call. Further discussion.
Counselor Shan, Counselor Hanan. And who's the second?
Counselor Hanan.
This is to go into executive session for the aforementioned reasons, including waiving.
Counselor McCauley.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just missed the last part of what you were saying, right? So I just didn't comprehend. So can we not go into executive session and talk about this publicly? Or because we posted it, we need to? We seem to be in a never-ending loop to go into executive session to answer the same question and then make the notes public to only come back again that.
Karis, this is a question for you. Do we, if there was a will of the council just to have this in open session while we're still in this meeting, before we approve that motion, can we just do it in open session? Or do we need to, because we posted it as executive session, do we need to go into executive session?
Yep, hang on, one second. Yeah. It is up to the council. You don't have to discuss it in executive session. If you would like to discuss it in open session, you can discuss it in open session.
Okay, even though we posted it as an executive session? All right?
That's correct.
Sounds good.
You can, you can change your mind and discuss it and have it in open session.
You can stay, Christian. I don't know why you would want to, but. Okay, Counselor Lane?
So you're not giving the public notice right now that we're having this meeting? So they can't show up and participate if we are to have this open?
Exactly. I agree.
I would, I would not, I'm not going to participate if that's the way it's going to go.
So you're saying stay with executive session?
Saying stay with executive session or reschedule to have a public meeting.
We have to do this.
Yeah.
We have a time.
We have a timeframe. That's all.
If I'm at home and I need executive session, well, I can't go to that, so I'm not going to have a lot of time.
Yeah, that was kind of the point I was trying to raise, that people knew it was going to be discussed. People might have been here and then, so we had an executive session, then we changed our minds, so. Well, Karis is saying we could if we wish to.
Yeah, I feel like just because we can, maybe we shouldn't. Like, just because we can, you know, doesn't mean we should.
Okay, Counselor Zied.
Yeah, just my last point is, the agenda doesn't tell you what's going to happen. It tells you what is going to be agendized to be discussed. So I agree, it's been a never-ending loop, but we take a vote to go in. So you're making a decision to do that. I just, I don't disagree with the logic. I'm just saying the council has a right to operate and to vote and to debate. So I yield.
Okay. So right now, we had a motion made and seconded to go into executive session. We'll just vote on it and also that waives rule 27, so we'll do that. And if we're in executive session, we're in executive session. If we're not in executive session, we won't be in executive session.
Okay. And so it's the roll call on that motion to go into executive session and waive the rules. Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Yes?
Yep.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Dunhu?
Yes.
Counselor Grannis?
Yes.
Counselor Hanan?
Yes.